I call this meeting of the City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to bill, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Fornier?
Here.
Counselor Grant is absent. Counselor Sykes?
Here.
Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Here.
Counselor McNevich?
Here.
Counselor Bullett is absent. Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Mayor Dion?
Here.
Chair would entertain a motion from the floor to suspend the rules and allow us to convene this meeting.
Is it moved?
Moved by Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Ali. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor. Unanimous. Announcements? From the council, anything? Okay, I'd like to announce to the public that both Order 239-2425, setting election date on an amendment to Chapter 33 of the Portland City Code, reference an act to increase Portland's minimum wage, and Order 26-2526, setting election date on a citizen initiative amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 17, an act to end fugitive coal dust, will be taken out of order and moved to the end of the business meeting. Yes. No, no, I'm going to get to that. I just wanted to make this announcement first. All right. The Chair will now entertain public comment on non-agenda items. If it's on the agenda, you can save your commentary for that particular resolution or order or item. If you want to communicate to the council on some other matter, you're free to come to the podium or to the microphone to do so.
Hi, I'm Lisa Blas. I have lived on Washmore Avenue, near Deering Avenue for the past 10 years. I live in District 2, though on the border with District 3. My house is around the corner from Fitzpatrick Stadium. I'm here to voice concerns about the unbearably loud music playing before, during halftime, and after Harts of Pine games, as well as during high school sport practice and game preparations. Sometimes these happen well before 8:00 AM. The music is so loud that I cannot hear my own TV or stereo, nor can I have any phone or video calls because the person I'm speaking with cannot hear me over the music and I cannot hear them. I am here to speak for my household, but do know that there are at least a dozen other households around the stadium that have also complained about the noise to the city and Harts of Pine management. We have been told by the mayor, Counselor Phillips, Ethan Hippel from Parks Department, and Senator Talbot Ross that the music is unbearably loud because the sound system is damaged, so the teams need to turn up the volume, and it will cost $49,000 to fix the damage. This is a lot of money. What has not been made clear to me is why the damaged sound system means the volume must be turned up to an unbearable level. I understand that Harts of Pine attendees have complained about this as well, saying that the music is so loud it hurts their children's ears. I am asking for the volume to be turned down to a reasonable level at all Fitzpatrick events, so it does no longer adversely impact the stadium neighbors or sporting event fans. Thank you.
Does anyone upstairs want to provide comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none. Anyone else?
Hello, everybody. Joey Brunel, 37 Pine Street. I'd like to reflect briefly on what happened last week with the DOT contract. Don't worry, it's going to be constructive.
Excuse me, it is on the agenda.
It's just a communication, though.
I know. We don't take public comment on communications. Next.
Good evening, City Council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Bill Weber, and I live in North Deering, District 5. I am representing the Portland Climate Action Team, PCAT. PCAT, with over 100 members in Portland, supports the One Climate Future Climate Action Plan, which was jointly developed with the city of South Portland, adopted by the city in 2020. We are here tonight to deliver a very simple and hopefully straightforward message. We are failing. We are failing to meet the commitments in the One Climate Future Climate Action Plan. One of the first tasks in creating the One Climate Future Plan in 2018 was developing an estimate for the greenhouse gases being generated. That greenhouse gas inventory was, for Portland, established a baseline estimate for 2017 at 840,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent. The plan, which was approved unanimously by the City Council, set a goal of 80% reduction by 2050. In 2019, Greta Thunberg, a Swedish climate activist, started a youth movement to challenge world leaders to take immediate action to mitigate the effects of climate change. That movement manifested into a match, into a march of, on Portland City Hall in September 2019, where over 2,000 protesters called on Portland to take, officials to take action. The mayor at the time responded to the gathered crowd, quote, "We accept your demands and we will act on your demands," unquote. The City Council then unanimously adopted Resolution 8-19/20, setting a goal to adopt an aggressive interim goal by 2030. The interim goal set a target of 546,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent by 2030, which would require a reduction of over 30%. PCAT has been calling for an update to the 2017 inventory for several years because you can't determine progress if you don't measure your performance. That updated inventory was started last year and will be available in November, according to the Sustainability Director. We understand from Director Moon that the update will show only a nominal reduction of only a few percent less than the baseline estimate. With less than five years till the interim target, it's clear we are not going to, we are going to miss that interim target badly. PCAT is calling on the city to develop a recovery plan that will bend that curve to get us back on track at least by 2040. This is possible if we use the funds in the newly created Climate Action Fund in a more strategic way. We need to use that funding to develop contract documents to implement renewable energy projects in the city. We need to expand the very successful solar projects the city has developed over time, saving the city millions of dollars a year. Director Moon is considering several roof-mounted projects that could move forward with the funding available in the Climate Action Fund. We need to move forward with some haste. Standard and Poor's has predicted a sharp increase in electricity prices in the next decade. The Sustainability and Transportation Committee needs to tackle the issue of a high energy burden for our low-income residents, and we need to do that now.
Time.
Thank you.
George Rowe, West Bayside. So, the land bank had a meeting on August 13th, and as they often do, things got sort of dark and scurrilous pretty quickly. To begin with, Ethan Hippel and his, the other staff members that were there, it's a beautiful, big conference room at the fairly new Park Headquarters out on Canca Road, but despite all this fancy technology and everything, they forgot to figure out how to record the meeting. So despite the fact that there was a staff member there on her computer doing everything, there was no recording of the meeting. And this has happened time and time again at both Parks Commission meetings and at Land Bank Commission meetings, particularly when there's an important, often controversial topic. And of course, that, on the evening of the 13th, what was happening was the land bank was getting a oral proposal from the Trust for Public Land to ask the land bank to devote $400,000, virtually its entire acquisition budget to date, to buy out a developer who is in foreclosure on a 13-acre property out on Hope Avenue that was supposed to be duplexes and triplexes. So I'm confused because obviously the city manager knew about this proposal and endorsed it, otherwise Ethan Hippel and his staff would not have urged the land bank to go forward with this. But your council goals say you're supposed to be focused on creating housing, not giving North Deering in District 5 more open space for people who have million-dollar homes right next door. And what's even worse about the lack of recording, because unless you were physically there, I made, I don't actually trust them to do the recordings anymore, so I physically show up when I can. And so I was a witness to what this whole discussion was, but one person who was there is a neighbor, he's also on the land bank, Michael Schrammeyer. He recused himself from the vote, but he participated in the entire discussion, asking some very pointed questions and leading the discussion in a certain direction. Now, as all of the City Council members know, and Corporation Council, and our city manager, and Ethan Hippel and his staff, when you recuse yourself, you're supposed to be completely out of it. Oftentimes, when you guys recuse yourself, you leave the room. You turn off your cameras. You, you do not talk. So how did Ethan Hippel, who gets paid about, what, $150,000 a year, runs our Department of Parks Recreation, is supposedly overseeing, you know, a $15 million pool renovation, how is he unaware of how recusal rules work?
Time.
That somebody who should not even be talking about something is allowed to direct the conversation?
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on an unagenda item? Seeing none. Public comment period is now closed. Oh, okay, well, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so this is about a comment on a public on the agenda of the, what's the meeting about today?
What is your name?
My name's Gibby. I'm from Portland. Gibson Shields.
Okay, thank you.
And previously, someone commented about the transportation ICE thing was like shut down, and I don't really care that they're shut down, as Portland has agreed to work with like a Gestapo organization to support them to grabbing neighbors and people of the community to get funds for the airport, like making a deal with the devil here, thinking you can just go through an injunction.
Excuse me, that's not up for discussion right now.
I don't care.
Well, I know you don't care, but that's the rule.
You are the people supposed to represent us and defend us and the community members.
We do, sir.
And you can't just like side and be like, no, we're not going to talk about that when you make these decisions that affect all of us. You know, you can claim that, oh, we're not going to work with them, we're not going to do stuff like that, but you signed a contract.
I don't want to call you out of order, but you are, sir.
That's fine. Do what you've got to do. I'm still going to say to this council what they're supposed to do to protect us, what we have voted for, and how they're collaborating with like a fascist regime by making that decision and giving any excuse they can about it. That's something you all have to face at night about deciding to collaborate with ICE that are putting people in detention camps. Do you know all the reports of women being sexually assaulted in these camps, about people being like harmed, all that? What's going to happen? Are you going to like force me out or arrest me? Yeah, I don't think anything can be civil when people are being put in detention camps in our country, and this town has agreed to support them and help them.
Mayor? Mayor Dion?
Yeah. Well, I said my piece now.
Excuse me.
It seems like there may be some people here who wish to comment on this, and so I guess I'm just asking for a point of order around how the council could consider allowing public comment on this, either to allow it here and public comment on non-agenda items or to suspend the rules for accepting public comment in communications. Where would that be the most appropriate place to consider that?
Corporation Council.
If it's something that, the decision about whether or not to hear public comment on something that is already on the agenda as a communication is up to the council. There's nothing in the state law that requires comment to be taken on this matter during an open public comment session. It would, it would be a decision for the council to make if, if, if there's, at some, some later date, or suspend the rules now and allow it, but those are, those are choices that are within the discretion of the council.
Chair would seek a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Seconded. Discussion. Counselor Phillips.
I'm all for suspending the rules. I just know that, I guess I'd rather hear what you have to say first. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there in the public's eye who don't know the story, and so I'm not sure if we're trying to do out of order when we get to the item, if we're doing it now, but I would, for me, I'd like to hear what you have to say, and then maybe people will understand what happened last week and, and go from there.
Counselor Fornier.
Thank you. I'm perfectly happy hearing from the public. I think the, this is such a large issue that doing an unnoticed public comment, if people do want to be heard about this, to me, I have an issue with that because I think we, we got a very, a lot of emails, phone calls, texts, social media DMs, and this is a really important topic to the public. There's clearly interest. And so if we're just going to suspend the rules tonight, to hear from the people who are here that wanted to speak, I mean, that's fine, but I would almost rather put it as an agenda item for next Wednesday, to say if people really want to give us feedback, notice it, let people know that that's when we're going to be discussing it and discuss it then.
So I guess my thought is that there are folks here who maybe didn't understand the rules around public comment for communications items, and so I'm happy to hear what people say while they're here, rather than having them come back. Folks could comment again at another meeting on a non-agenda item if they want to, but just, just out of respect for the folks that showed up tonight, I think I'd, I'd like to hear what they, what they're here to talk about.
Is your second still in place? Seconded by, Counselor, you seconded?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion from the council? If there's no discussion, a call for a vote. You want to roll call that? All those in favor suspending the rules? Motion prevails. You, you've already said what you have to say. I'll comment later, but I'll hear from any, anyone else. You are now.
Hello again. Joey Brunel, still 37 Pine Street. I'm going to start from the top. I'd like to reflect on what happened last week with the DOT contract, and this is going to be constructive. We, the public, want to be your partner in the fight against this evil administration, but you need to treat us like partners. You need to treat us, you need to trust us with what's going on. People are scared and angry, so without information from our leaders, that fear and anger will metastasize into mistrust and chaos. Executive sessions are a useful, often necessary tool, I get it. However, just because you legally can discuss something in private doesn't mean that you always should. With an issue like this, Grant, you could have talked in public, at least for part of your deliberations, or after the session ended, the mayor could have come out and told everyone what was going on. We trust you with power, you need to trust us with the truth. Being a city councillor or a mayor is about more than just managing this building. Part of the job is leadership, talking to the public about the ongoing authoritarian crisis and telling us where we should put our energy and our resources. Let the lawyers be lawyers, that's their job. Our leaders need to lead, that's your job. I know we've tried to keep a low profile so far to not make ourselves a target, but make no mistake, they are coming and we need to be prepared. We need to have conversations with the public, the council, the city manager, the police department, city staff, everybody. We all need to be on the same page. We need to have plans for when the feds demand collaboration or when New Hampshire National Guard shows up on our streets. The old Portland will handle it informally thing is not going to cut it anymore. We need to decide now what our red lines are and how decisions will be made in times of crisis. For example, how would the city clerk react to requests for our voter rolls? How would the parking department react to requests for vehicle info? Obviously, we can't predict everything, but we need to be prepared. We also need to be prepared to lose funds to defend our values. Pretty soon, we will need to give the administration a big middle finger, and when that day comes, the public will be, will be behind you 100%. We are scared, angry, and hungry for our city and our leaders to take a stand, like California and Boston have. We've got your backs, but we need to see you fighting, because if you're not fighting, why should we? Look around at what other cities are doing, setting up funds for immigrant legal defense, distributing information about constitutional rights, working with their police to monitor ICE activity. Do some research, get creative. At the beginning of the Civil War, President Lincoln went to Congress and told them something similar, quote, "The dogmas of the quiet past are inadequate to the stormy present. This occasion is piled high with difficulty, and we must rise with the occasion. As our case is new, so we must think anew and act anew. Then we shall save our country." Let's get to work. Thank you.
No, hold on, hold on, hold on. There are rules here. As you see, the decision to speak was accomplished by rule. The rules also do not allow for public demonstrations of support or opposition. That's the way we respect the speaker. All right? If you want to come here and you want our partnership, there are rules that have to be followed. Now, Mr. Brunel took his seat when I denied him the opportunity to speak, but he's welcome to the rostrum when the rules of the council were suspended and the majority said he should. That's how you run a government, by rule. Anyone else wishing to speak on this particular issue?
Stephen Sharf of Brackett Street. I fully support your decision to sign that contract. You approved the contract in January, and there was no reason not to sign it, and want to say that there are thousands of people in the city of Portland who would gladly stand up here and tell you they would support your signing of that contract. So there is not a hundred percent support against signing it, as was just described. I do agree with Mr. Brunel on one thing, is the fact that you did hold a executive session at short notice and, and did what is described by some people in the public, some members of the council publicly, that you took a vote. I know what you did in the executive session was not an actual vote, it was sort of everybody's had their piece, and based on that, you were able to count heads and know where the council stood, A or B, but that should not even even happen. You should have gotten instruction from your Corporation Council and then come back out of, executive session and had that conversation. And that is where you, where you failed in that process. So we, we do support your signing of the contract, and we do support improving the airport with federal funds, and we want to just remind you that there are more federal fund programs coming down the bike, and I don't think there, any of them are not going to have that provision in it. So either you're going to turn down all federal money, or you're going to have to be signing away your, your right to oppose ICE intervention. Thank you.
Anyone else on this topic? All right, Counselor, I'll take my cue from Counselor Phillips, as well as Counselor Fornier. I think there was, I would say, a pretty detailed, intense review of our actions through the media. The reason that I've incorporated the communication that I delivered on behalf of the council to the public is so that you could read and reflect on it, so I'm not going to engage on this topic this evening. But if on the third, there are individuals after their read of the document have further questions or comments, actually comments, because we don't get into a Q and A during public, period, you can do so. And that's all I'm going to say about it this evening, because I don't want to extend the agenda any further than necessary, but I appreciate everyone's comments, and thank you to the council. Chair would now seek a motion to approve the minutes of August 11, 2025. Moved by Counselor Ali? Seconded by Counselor Sykes. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify. It's unanimous. Clerk will now read Communication 22526.
Communication 22526, Federal Aviation Administration Grant Agreements by Mark Dionne, Mayor.
I've made my comments accordingly. As I said earlier, Order 239-2425 will be taken out of order at the end of the meeting. Also, Order 262526 will also be taken out of order at the end of the business meeting. Clerk will now read Order 272526.
Order 272526, approving amendments to the Complete Streets Policy sponsored by the Sustainability and Transportation Committee. Counselor Janet Phillips, Chair.
Chair would yield to Counselor Phillips for comment.
Thank you, Mayor. This has come before our committee, the Complete Streets Policy, it's something that we've been working on for the last several years, so this is really just a, somewhat of a communication and an update. Since adopting the policy in 2012, it hasn't been updated, and so the, the updates here are just, just that, updates. It gives us the rundown of who's responsible for what regarding city staff and the council. And I don't know if Troy's here to say anymore about that. Sorry, or Kevin?
Kevin is here, but I also have some comments. I know Assistant City Manager Greg Jordan had worked with the committee on this item, and this really is a follow-up to the resolution that the council passed back in April, so there will be revisions to this Complete Streets Policy, as well as a Vision Zero Quick Action Plan, which identifies a series of measures we plan to implement over the next 12 months. A few examples of that include forming an internal cross-departmental working group, as Counselor Phillips just mentioned, performing safety audits for arterial crosswalks, evaluating citywide street lighting, also implementing an effective public information campaign, and regular progress reporting, as well as surging traffic enforcement and adding more speed feedback signs. Staff will be providing progress to the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, quarterly at least, and will provide updates on both the long-term and short-term implementation of this plan. And as Counselor Phillips noted as well, Kevin Kraft from the Planning Department, as well as Noel Donaldson are here. If there's any specific questions, and I think Greg might be around as well, and there he is in the back, if there's any other specific questions.
Any questions from any of the counselors? Counselor Bullett?
Not a question, but just a lot of gratitude for staff and for the very engaged members of the public who really helped us make this update be as great as I think it could be, and already seeing some of the changes happen on the streets of Portland is very, very exciting. And maybe I'll stop texting you pictures from other cities of all the things that I see, but probably not. So thank you so much, really, to the public especially. The engagement on this and S and T was, was very impressive, so keep it up, because the work's only starting.
I have a question for Assistant City Manager Jordan. Sometimes there are terms that we exchange with each other that makes a lot of sense to us, but could you summarize in two sentences or so what's complete streets means?
It's a great question. So complete streets means a balanced street system that accommodates all users in proportion to their use of the street, so balancing the needs of people who are walking, biking, driving cars, other modes of transportation, transit, things of that, making sure we're addressing things in balance.
So does that mean whenever we engage either independently or with the state in the redesign of a roadway, we automatically incorporate priorities surrounding pedestrians and bicyclists?
That's certainly our goal. For roads in Portland that are controlled by the state, the state also has their own Complete Streets Policy. It's not as, it's not completely in line with ours, but we work together in partnership to find common ground and make this system work as best we can.
Thank you. Chair would entertain public comment on this order.
There's a step right here. I'm gonna have to straddle this thing. Hey, everybody.
We would have preferred you be right here eyeball to eyeball with us.
Yeah, well, you know, we can't get what we want. Good evening, Mayor Dianne, members of the City Council. My name is Andrew Zarro. I'm the Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. On behalf of our members, partners, and supporters across the state, I'm here tonight to voice our strong support for the adoption of Portland's updated Complete Streets policy. First, I just want to say thank you. A couple of the counselors already said this, but I also want to weigh in and say thank you to city staff for the development of this and for inviting BCM early this spring to be a part of this, to invite us and Portland Trails and members of PB PAC, who I've seen a couple members here tonight, to weigh in and share some input. You listened carefully. You incorporated our feedback and have delivered a policy that reflects some national best practices while staying grounded in the needs of Portland's residents. Portland's original Complete Streets policy was adopted in 2012. It was an important first step at the time, but in the way that we think about our streets, about safety, and the way our climate has evolved over time, it's changed. And so this updated policy recognizes active transportation, and that's biking, walking, rolling, and also riding transit, that it's not secondary. It's essential. It re-centers people, not cars, in a way that we design, invest in, and we use public spaces. It sets clear goals. It strengthens accountability through annual reporting and focuses on equitable investment in underserved neighborhoods. This policy matters because streets shape cities like Portland. The choices that we make today about how we design and prioritize our streets will determine how Portland grows over the next couple of decades, how safe our neighborhoods are going to be, and how our businesses thrive, how our communities are connected. So already this year, I'll talk about this in a little bit for the Vision Zero item, Portland has experienced multiple serious crashes involving people biking and walking, including several fatalities. These aren't just statistics. These are our friends, our neighbors, our family members. This updated Complete Streets policy is more than just a checklist that all of you are going through. It's a gateway. It opens the door for Portland to transform into a city where people feel safe, welcome, and connected to how they travel. So this is a real choice that you're giving Portlanders, how they move, that it's going to be healthier, more sustainable, and a better long-term economic map for people. So adopting this policy is a good idea. I hope that all of you vote in support of it this evening. It's going to be really supportive of the Vision Zero item you have coming up next. It helps us achieve those Vision Zero goals. So on behalf of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, I urge you to vote yes and to help Portland take this important step forward to create a safer, healthier, and more connected city. Thank you for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on this order? Go ahead.
Thanks. Steve Lacounte, I live here in Portland, maybe the street, anyway. Just real quick, I actually hadn't planned on speaking on this topic at all, but it's great. A balanced city and transportation that benefits everybody is good for the city. In listening to it, though, I would hope that as people shape this, that there's some attention to the non-motorist users. And by that, I mean people walking and biking. Having spent a lot of my time down in Boston and other major metro areas, I honestly was very thrown moving back to Portland. The bikes don't follow rules. They, pedestrians walk across, don't walk lights. It's very harrowing sometimes as a driver, and there's no enforcement to it. Bikes just roll right through red lights. You're looking for what's supposed to be happening, and people aren't always following those things. So it's like if we're going to create infrastructure to support all people and all needs, I hope that gets looked at too because sometimes I get very scared for what's going on. I saw a guy get wiped out in Trader Joe's last week because he came off the street, went through the parking lot, and the truck had no time to avoid him. And people will point the finger at the truck and say, "You hit a guy on a bike." But that guy was just sailing through the parking lot and got cleaned out. So anyways, just throwing that in there.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order? Seeing none. Counsel? All right then. All those in favor of this order, please signify by hand. Unanimous. Clerk will now read Order 282526.
Order 282526, Approving the Vision Zero Quick Action Plan Sponsored by the Sustainability and Transportation Committee. Counsel Regina Phillips, Chair.
Chair yields to Counsel Philps for comment.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. Yeah, this is just kind of a continuation of the Vision Zero policy that we adopted in April. Sustainability and Transportation, we've been talking about this. I really do want, I appreciate all the work that Greg Jordan has put into this. You can look at the long and short-term goals of the Vision Zero policy, and this is only for a year. And so it's very clear. It talks about exactly what we're going to do within the next year. This will be an ongoing thing in our S and T meetings. And so we asked that it be adopted. And I don't know if anybody has any questions for Assistant City Manager Greg Jordan, but you did a great job on this.
Thank you, Chair Philps. Any comments from staff, Director Moon? Okay, we're all set. All right then. Public comment on this order?
Mayor Dianne, council members, my name is Kiptis Air.
I was going to tell you about the microphone. I'm not even using mine properly.
That's right. How's that?
All right, just pull it forward a little bit towards you.
Okay.
All right then.
Okay, that's better. My name is Kiptis Air. I live on Brackett Street in the West End, and I'm president of the West End Neighborhood Association. And I'm here to support Vision Zero. When I became president of WENA, we had a meeting to decide what was going to be our priority for the year, and it was right after we had had a whole spate of pedestrian fatalities. And it was pretty obvious that our priority for the year was going to be pedestrian safety. So we've been involved in some demonstration projects, working well with Public Works. And Vision Zero gives us a framework to work toward. Once we slow people down, we know that there's going to be fewer accidents and fewer fatalities. So WENA strongly supports Vision Zero. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order?
Hello again, Andrew Zarro. Good evening, everyone. Again, Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. I'm going to cut right to the good part. So as of today, right before coming here, August 25, 2025, in the city of Portland, we've already experienced 27 bicycle crashes and 23 pedestrian crashes, three of which have been fatal. These aren't just numbers. These are our neighbors, again, coworkers, friends, families. These are lives that have been forever changed. Our community has changed for it. This has not been a good year for the city. Every one of those crashes were preventable. We have the tools and the data. We know what to do. Vision Zero provides the framework to act boldly and decisively. BCM has been a proud partner with the city of Portland and GP COG on safety initiatives to align with this plan. Most recently, we have collaborated with you to design an installation for Safe Streets for All in Washington Ave. If you have not checked it out yet, please do. It went in about a month ago, and it is doing its job. We have also supported several smaller safety projects across the city of Portland and provided about half a dozen Vision Zero educational presentations to neighborhood associations, the West End Neighborhood Association being one of them, helping residents understand what Vision Zero is, what's at stake, why this work matters. But these individual efforts are not enough on their own. What we need now is a coordinated citywide commitment to safer streets, and that is exactly what the Vision Zero Quick Action Plan delivers. It advances projects that make our roadway safer, expands public education, improves post-crash responses, and it leverages funding opportunities like Safe Streets for All federal grants. By adopting this plan, Portland is saying that one death on our streets is one too many. You'll be joining a growing number of cities across the country taking responsibility designing transportation systems to protect the most vulnerable road users, our children walking to school, our seniors crossing busy intersections, our neighbors commuting by bike or on foot. So on behalf of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, I urge you to vote yes on this tonight. I appreciate you for your leadership in the spring by voting, bringing and voting your resolution on Vision Zero. But let's send a clear message that Portland is committed to saving lives, building healthier communities, and making our streets safer for everyone. Again, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order? Seeing none. Where? Oh, we have to come forward then.
Hi, I'm Liz Trice. Thank you for being so supportive of this order. I just want to speak very strongly in terms of Vision Zero. I believe that people feeling safe in our public spaces is a really important element to just having a civilized, equitable city. And if you feel like you walk out your door, and just because there's pavement, it means that your child or your dog or yourself could get run over, it's just unpleasant. It's a real detractor from living in a city, and I think we want to grow. And I think we're going to have to change in order, as a housing advocate, I think we're going to have to make our city more walkable and bikeable in order to be able to grow because we have room for many, many, many people and not as many cars. And people take up about one thousandth the space of a car moving at 60 miles an hour. So I just want to thank you for your support of this and encourage you to go as far as possible in this direction. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Dare I say, public comment is over now on this item? I will. Chair would now seek a motion for passage from the council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Philps, seconded by Counsel Bullock. Discussion by the council. Counsel Bullock?
Because I can, I'm just going to put a couple plugs in. We have a lot of people here tonight, and you know, we always say six degrees of separation, but in Maine, we all know that it's about one degree of separation, and that the best way to share information in Maine and in our small communities is word of mouth. And so talk about Vision Zero. Talk with your friends, talk with your neighbors, talk with your family. It really makes a difference. I happened to be last month visiting one of the firehouses, and I mentioned it, and the firefighter said, "Wait, tell us more." And I ended up getting to get on my soapbox about Vision Zero, and then I ran into one of those firefighters a couple days ago, and he told me he's been telling all the other firefighters. So it really is a great way to talk about something really positive that we're doing in our community to make everybody safer. And my second plug I want to put is that it is going to start to get darker early very soon, and school starts next week. Those are two very significantly negative potential impacts for the safety on our streets. So when you're telling everybody about Vision Zero, also remind them to slow down and look for kids because school starts next week. Thanks so much.
Anyone else in the council wishing to provide comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by hand. Passes unanimously. Chair would now ask clerk to read Order 292526.
Order 292526, Approving Third Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Maine Cooperative Development Partners LLC Regarding 165 Lambert Street, Sponsored by the Housing and Economic Development Committee. Counsel Pious Ali, Chair.
Chair would yield to Counsel Ali for comment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has been going on since 2023, and the developers came back to us because their financial situation have changed for the contract to be amended. All the information is in the backup, and I hope the council will support this moving it forward.
All right then. Any comment from staff?
Mary Davis is here if there's any questions.
Mary, can I ask you a question? Would you be so kind as to summarize the premise for the continuation or the amendment to the purchase and sale so it could be extended for the public?
Sure. My name is Mary Davis. I'm the Housing and Community Development Division Director for the city. This is a third amendment to the purchase and sale agreement between the city and Maine Cooperative Development Partners. This is in regards to property at 165 Lambert Street, and the developer is proposing a limited equity cooperative housing project there. It's the first of its kind here in Portland, and we've had some bumps along the way getting the project up and running, financing issues. We're on a good path now and believe that the project will be in the ground next year. But to give us some room, we're asking, and the developer is asking for a one-year extension. Also, in this amendment, we are limiting the amount of expenses that the city would be required to reimburse the developer if the project didn't go forward. That was one of our concessions in agreeing to move the one-year extension forward. Next month on your agenda, you'll have some financing requests for the city for this project, but the first step is the amendment to the purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you, Mary. Chair would now seek any public comment on this order. I'll go upstairs first. Go ahead.
I, Liz Trice, I'm with the developer, Maine Cooperative Development Partners, and I just want to thank you for being patient with this. This was one of the four properties that the city put out for RFP in 2020 with the intention of building more middle-income and mixed-income housing in the city. We now have Doherty Commons, which the Zantin Company's 63-unit building just had its ribbon cutting last week. We have our first four-unit building on the ground. Another 12 units are going on the ground third week of September, and we have the third phase with funding ready to go. So that's in good shape. And also the Lambert Woods North Project, which is being developed as another light-type project with preservation of affordable housing, is starting construction this fall. I'm not sure if it's late September or early October. So this is the last piece, and in some ways the most important piece because it's the limited equity cooperative, which is part of why you, the council, chose us to develop it because it's something that hadn't been in Maine, and it's a really valuable tool because it's somewhere between renting and ownership. It provides a lot of the benefits of ownership without having to have, without people having to have mortgages, which is really important, and it's permanently affordable. So it's taken us longer to do it, in part because of changes in interest rates nationally and also changes in the national government. And we are now grateful that it's on a good path, and we're excited. So thank you for your patience, and we're going to do it, and we'll be there. So thank you. That's it.
To the floor.
George Rowe, West Bayside. So this is, you know, an example of when the city gets involved in the politics of housing, things take forever, and we don't get very much out of it. And it's, this project has been really frustrating. You know, actually, this started in 2018 when the Housing Committee at that time was asking to look at city land, and there weren't a lot of good ideas put forward, but they suddenly, some longstanding plan for playing fields in this area suddenly was no longer important, and this land became available. But it's been a long, drawn-out thing, and your amendments, the original purchase and sale from a couple of years ago did not have the risk on the city for all of the development costs. Now you've been taking that risk on, and this amendment is somehow attempting to cap that risk. The problem is, you don't even know how much has been spent, like, or, you know, like, what has gone into this so far? All we're getting are 22 units in this phase. That assumes there's going to be a second phase, but we don't know that. We have to get 22 first. And I don't think you guys, I mean, this is, again, politics. You love this idea of limited equity cooperatives. It's not a new idea. It's been used all over the country. New York, I think, started using them in like the 1930s. It's housing. Housing's expensive. It's, you know, it's risk for the people that buy into this community. They can't actually sell their property in the same way that a non-equity co-op is. So there's a lot of people that don't want anything to do with this property because they would rather buy something in the private market and be able to do what all of you who own private homes and and be able to do what all of you who own private homes and private properties do, which is you get all that, you know, generous appreciation that you just sit on your property for years, and it gets more expensive because we're not building enough housing. So I asked a whole bunch of questions in an email. I have no idea if you're curious about that, but you're shoveling a lot of money towards this project, and you're taking on all the risk. I don't know if the developer and the developer consultants, all the bevy of people involved, if they're taking any less money than they were originally due to the delays and all of the twists and turns of this process. But that's what happens in private development. Somebody, it takes a long time to get something off the ground, they make less money. They eat those costs. You guys are literally offering to pay the developer for their time in trouble if things don't work out. And that's a strange thing. And it suggests that basically you just want to dictate to the developer how this is going to go. But, you know, you're putting all the taxpayers on the hook for it, and somebody's getting very expensive housing at a discount, but only 22 units of it. So please ask some questions.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order? Seeing none. Chair would seek a motion for passage. Moved by Counselor Ali. Seconded by Counselor Sykes. Discussion. Counselor Fornia.
Thank you. Mary, this is probably for you. I'm largely supportive of this project, but I think anytime I see a third amendment coming up for a development that isn't the full scope of what we had initially intended, I definitely have some concerns. And I think the public has brought up some relevant concerns. So this first round, we're spending eight to eight and a half million for the 20 homes. Is that right?
That's the development cost for the first phase of the project, yes.
And I know you can't predict the future, but considering now we're on our third amendment, and this is only getting us a third, not even a third, of what we initially had anticipated with this project, what are we likely to see in the next phases if the next phases are even expected to happen?
As far as development costs?
And development costs and the likelihood that this is, that the next phases will even happen?
Yeah. So based on our conversations with the developer, they're at a place now where momentum is moving forward on several of the projects that they were under contract for. Doherty Commons, as the developer mentioned before, is underway. Lambert Woods North, their development partners moving forward with that. So there's momentum on all of their projects right now. Once they have this phase of, the first phase of Lambert Woods South underway, the financing model that they've put together is very replicable. So they intend, in the next two or three phases, possibly four, to build up to the full 90 units that were approved in the purchase and sale agreement. Our commitment for funding at this point is just in Phase One. We're not funding, the city is not funding $8.8 million. We're providing, and that's part of the information that will be in front of you next month. We're being asked to provide $2.2 million. A lot of that is to complete the public infrastructure needs for the whole site. And hopefully will not require us to have additional funding in the further phases. But I feel like we're at a point now where this project is very ready to move forward and likely to get those other phases underway.
Thank you. I'll have more questions when we get to the funding meeting, but that was helpful. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Any other comments from council? Do you have any questions? Let me ask it this way, Mary. What's the downside for the city if this third attempt fails?
We, we still own the property, so the property will stay as a city-owned piece of property. This third amendment and also in the original purchase and sale agreement, I would ask Corporation Council to back me up on this, because I don't have that document right in front of me. But if we, if the project's not able to move forward, and the city is, is going to be canceling the contract, we were already on the hook, if you will, to pay some of the costs associated with the development of the project. We've limited that cost. We've put a cap on it at this point. We do-
Cap of how much?
It's about $900,000. I think I don't have the whole number.
Is that practice inconsistent with what's been done in the past?
It is not inconsistent, because in paying those costs, if the developer fails to move forward or is unable to move forward, all of the plans, their studies, their reports, everything that, all the work product that we would be paying for would become property of the city. We would have their development proposal and their development approvals that we could move forward with another developer on.
Sorry, I must be an echo. Going to the financing piece for just a second. On this idea of a cooperative equity model, what is your understanding of the local financial market? Did, I know someone said it's been here since the 30s. I wasn't there, close to, but not there. Do they have experience in that? Because I find it's fair to say that financial institutions tend to be conservative and work with what they know as opposed to something they don't know.
So originally, this project, the developer proposed to finance this with a federal program that proved to be sort of difficult to work with, and they weren't able to move forward. Their model right now is more of traditional construction financing. That's one of the reasons why they've moved from developing the full 90 units at one time to this phased approach. They're able to put together, in this day and, in day and age, a relatively small development pro forma, move forward with the first phase. Once that's done, that financing is in place, the project's completed, they can move forward with the other projects. So the model that's being proposed right now for this first initial phase is much more of sort of traditional, conventional construction financing.
Will it still result in a cooperative equity?
Yes, it will.
All right. My last question. Have you established in partnership with the developers any benchmarks to see whether or not the year is going to be used up? In other words, we're giving them another year. That's nice. Momentum, to me, is just a word. Do you have some specific benchmarks that have to be met in order to justify the fact we're going to give them an extension tonight?
The amendment to the purchase and sale doesn't include any specific benchmarks, but the proposal that we've discussed with them leads us to believe that this first phase of the project is very likely to be underway by the end of the year or the beginning of next year, and that it will move really quickly. It's modular construction, similar to what they're doing at Doherty Commons. So the template and format are, have already been established and would be easy to replicate here on this parcel.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mary, for being patient with me. All right, then. Chair would seek a motion. There's nothing further. All those in favor of Order 292526, please signify. It's unanimous. Clerk will now read Order 302526.
Order 302526, accepting appropriating a $179,300 Community Action Grant from the Governor's Office of Policy and Innovation and the Future, sponsored by Daniel West, City Manager.
Amen from the city manager.
Troy Moon, our Sustainability Director is here this evening. I don't know if Troy, you want to give a little background information on this item?
Very happy to. Hello, I'm Troy Moon. I'm the Director of Sustainability for the City of Portland. And as Danielle mentioned, this is accepting a community action grant from the Governor's Office of Policy and Innovation in the Future, and it's designed to update and extend the data from our climate vulnerability assessment, which we conducted in 2019. So there's a lot more new information that we need to incorporate to understand the climate vulnerabilities of the city. So we're proposing to use the funds to do a complete shoreline inventory of all of Portland, and South Portland, actually. It's, this is a collaboration with South Portland and Gulf of Maine Research Institute. So we'll have updated data about our coastal features. We're going to integrate the new, the new hydrodynamic model that we use for our coastal flooding overlay zone, as well as a number of other data sets. So we'll have a better understanding. And then we're going to use this data to create actually a decision tool to help us prioritize, you know, identify different vulnerabilities of all of our civic assets, everything from roads and bridges and culverts and sewers. And also going to incorporate data from the social vulnerability index. We're able to index the, the, kind of like the fact, the hard data, whether an asset is part of, you know, is it impacted by five-year floods? But also, does it impact marginalized communities? So we can help make sure that we're prioritizing investments where they make the most difference.
Thank you, Troy.
Any questions to Director Moon from the council? Counselor Bullock.
Thanks for being here, Director Moon. And sorry if you mentioned this in committee. I, and also just thank you for going after this funding and whatever method that you did, given how smaller populations are and how close our towns are. It makes so much sense to be working with our neighbors. Wondering if we are going to get updates in conjunction with like the South Portland staff as well at S and T meetings once the work gets started?
We certainly can, Counselor.
Thank you, Troy. Don't go away, though. You never know. All right, then. Is there any public comment on this order? Seeing none, the chair would seek a motion to waive a second reading of this order. Moved by Counselor Bullock, Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Ali. Any discussion on that? All right, the chair would, well, we'll vote on this one in order to waive the second reading. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Chair would now seek a motion to pass this order as an emergency. Moved by Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Mcnevich. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of passing Order 302526 as an emergency, please signify by hand. All right. Sorry, Counselor Sykes, I wasn't sure, from the jaw to the head. All right, it's unanimous. Clerk will now read Order 312526.
Order 312526, accepting and appropriating an $80,000 paramedicine grant from the Maine Recovery Council, sponsored by Daniel West, City Manager.
Thank you. This item is, and we're requesting that, again, that you waive the second reading and pass this as an emergency. It's two annual installments of $40,000 to cover our mobile, the overtime for our mobile medical outreach unit. This is for staff who's working on that unit. That unit plays a crucial role in addressing specifically services for our most vulnerable populations throughout the city. And there's a lot of more information in the backup materials. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you, City Manager. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this particular order?
Evening, Shaw for Breckin Street. Seem to have a lot of emergency motions these days. I'm not sure if that's from lack of planning or just desire to usurp the process. But this is another case of that. And I only have one question with this. I read, I guess, most of the backup material. But the city managers referred to it's helping our vulnerable populations, but it's actually very specific that it's relating to pregnant and postpartum women who are using drugs, apparently, basically. And my question is, there was nothing in the backup about actual specific numbers of how many people out there are in that cohort of individuals. And it did reference, and I can't remember the exact numbers, it referenced, I think, contract reference, that you need to provide, of course, reports back to the funding source as to how many people you have served in that capacity. And I believe it was like eight to 10 people. And I'm like, this is a pretty expensive grant for serving eight to 10 people. And, you know, so I'm just concerned that we're spending a lot of money for a very small return on investment. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order? All right, seeing none. Okay, sorry.
It's okay. Max Twine, I live in the West End.
You can bring the mic up so you don't, there you go. I don't want you to be crouched over.
Thank you. I live in the West End. From my perspective, this is a very small amount of money that is a very worthwhile investment in the health of children in Eduro, women who are pregnant. There, from my perspective, is no greater calling than to support women who are in that situation, who are pregnant and addicted to drugs and maybe having at-risk pregnancies or raising children in a tough situation. So contrary to my, my friend in the West End who just spoke, I think it's a very small amount of money to pay and something worth moving very quickly on.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order? Seeing none. The chair would take a motion to waive a second reading.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Sykes. It was you? It's all right. Let the record reflect it was Mcnevich. All right, then. Any discussion about that?
I'm not going to apologize.
Counselor Bullock, I've said that, what, four, 20 times tonight? And I made a mistake once. Go ahead.
I just want to publicly thank the Maine Recovery Council for this, these funds, for those that haven't had the opportunity.
Hold on, hold on. We'll get to that. We're just on the motion right now. Any discussion on the, on the motion? No. No, this is a motion to waive second reading. I know you're anxious to speak, but I have simple requests. All right, if there's no discussion on the motion, all those in favor of waiving a second reading. It's unanimous. Chair would now seek a motion to pass this order as an emergency.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Bullock. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Ali. Now you have the floor, Counselor Bullock.
Thanks so much. The MMO, or the Medical Outreach Unit, is a really phenomenal example of partnership. And so big thanks to the Maine Recovery Council for kicking money toward, toward this awesome project. For those that don't know, there's a variety of medical practitioners from around the community whose healthcare organizations sort of lend them to the fire department so that they can ride on the ambulance and go find their patients wherever they might be on any, on the particular day that they're riding along. It's not just people that are actively using drugs. It's people that are unhoused. It's people that are using MAT, which is therapy. And it's a population that is near and dear to my heart, which is pregnant people. And this, the day that I rode along, I only rode with them for four hours. them for four hours, and they saw eight people in those four hours. And they also, the ripple effects of these medical providers being out in the community cannot be understated. So this is one of those opportunities where we are getting like total bang for our buck. This money goes a very, very long way, because just by the nature of the paramedics being out in the community, they're not ignoring everybody else. They're not just there to find their pregnant patient. They're looking around, they're looking up, they're seeing who else so-and-so needs a walker, why doesn't he have a walker? We're going to go get you a walker. We'll be back in an hour. And then they were. It's amazing. So this is a program that is really, really worth it. And I encourage all my colleagues to support it and to continue to support paramedicine as a, as a health tool for our community at large.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment from the Council? Seeing none. Counselor Sykes?
Could I just, I would just, for the public, like some clarification around, this is something that came up before and we decided to postpone it, is that right? I'm sort of asking the City Manager. No, different grant? Okay.
That was a different grant.
Okay. So, and this program, is this one of the programs that was canceled by the feds because they were, basically said the pandemic is over?
It could be, Counselor. I can't recall all of the background information. We did have a couple of grants that were coming from them that were connected to the pandemic, as well as to funding at the state level that were caught up in that. I don't believe this is one of them, but it could be. I don't have anyone from the fire department here tonight who can correct me, but I'll get you that information.
So this isn't attempting to backfill the lost funding that we would have lost from the feds?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment on this order? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by hand. Passes unanimously as an emergency. Clerk will now do the first readings, and we can move on to those delayed orders.
Order 322526, accepting and appropriating a twenty-five thousand resilient communities grant from the Casco Bay Estuary Partnership, approving the subword between the University of Maine System and the City of Portland, sponsored by Daniel West, City Manager. Order 332526, accepting and appropriating a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight Parks and Lighting Pilot Grant from the United States Tennis Association, sponsored by Daniel West, City Manager. Order 342526, appropriating a two million, four hundred and forty-eight, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar in-home American Rescue Plant Funding, sponsored by the Housing and Economic Development Committee, Counselor Pious Ali, Chair. Order 352526, Amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 30, Regarding Taxi Fares, sponsored by the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, Counsel Regina Phillips, Chair. Order 362526, Amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 6, Regarding Vacant Commercial Properties, sponsored by the Housing and Economic Development Committee, Counselor Pious Ali, Chair. Order 372526, Amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 14, Regarding Pedestrian Activities, District Pad Overlay Zone, sponsored by the Planning Board, Brandon Major, Chair.
Clerk will now read two related orders. Order 382526 and Order 262526.
Order 262526, Setting an Election Date on the Citizens Initiative Amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 17, Regarding an Act to End Fugitive Coal Dust, sponsored by Ashley Mann, City Clerk. And Order 382526, Amendment to the Portland City Code, Chapter 17, Regarding Fugitive Coal Dust, sponsored by Counsel Regina Phillips and Counselor Pious Ali.
Chair would seek a motion to waive the second read on Order 382526.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Phillips, seconded by Counselor Ali. Discussion on the motion to waive second read only. Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. I'll take comment from Counselor Phillips and then Counselor Ali on both orders.
Thank you, Mayor. I have had the pleasure of knowing Sarah Suther for over a year. She first educated me about the coal piles at Cassidy Point, invited me down there to meet with her and a colleague, so that I could take a look at the pile. I got to say, when I first went down, I was incredibly shocked at this massive coal pile that we have there. I also was able to look and see in the offices and see on the winch, what are those things called? Window sills. Geez, I'm a crow. Look on the window sills and see how the coal actually came inside the window, and the window was closed. I've seen pictures, I've seen videos of how the coal bus, the coal pile can combust and catch on fire all on its own. I'm not even going to get into the health conditions of this. I have been briefed on it by many, specifically Sarah Suther, who just has the utmost education on this, much more than I do. As some of you know, the coal pile is really close to Mercy Hospital, which is something else that's extremely concerning. Because with the day that I visited, you could obviously see the coal that went into the window. I can only imagine what's happening at Mercy. So the other thing is, is that the coal doesn't stay here in Maine, it gets delivered. And again, it's massive, tons of coal gets delivered. And it's just a holding place for Spreg. It goes, it comes delivered, and then it goes on a train, it gets transported to Rumford. And so this is, this is a huge thing. This isn't something that we need in our city. We've, I've had numerous conversations, not only with Sarah, but some of the other folks, the Sierra Club, I know Counselor Ali has had conversations with folks, I know Counselor Sykes has also had some conversations with Sarah and some other folks. And we've also, we invited members of Spreg, the Maine DEP and Sarah, to all come to an S and T meeting. When I tell you we've had conversations about this for the last year and a half, we have. And unfortunately, there hasn't been any really clear solutions on how we can do this. And so through Sarah and the Sierra Club and the Conservation Law Foundation and others, they did sign a petition and wanted to put this on the ballot. I would like to have us vote on it tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the Chair of the Sustainability and Transportation have summed it up all. I just want to thank those, everybody that worked hard to collect the signatures, so that we can put this on the ballot. I will follow my chair's lead from here.
Thank you. All right, then. Chair would entertain public comment on both these orders.
Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. I am that Sarah Suther. Each member of this council has really taken a lot of time.
Could you, can you, you can pull the mic towards you.
Thanks so much. Each member of this council and city staff have devoted time to considering an act to end fugitive coal dust. Neighbors and advocates have put many hours over the past three years thinking about the coal dust issue on Cassidy Point. And to all of them, I am extremely grateful. I would like to start my remarks by thinking about what Senator Muskie, the mayor responsible for the nineteen-seventy Clean Air Act and Water Quality Act of nineteen-seventy-one, which is important to note, the U.S. Senate passed by a vote of eighty-six to nothing. He said, "What happens to each of us must make a difference to all of us. We should not turn a blind eye to our friends, neighbors, fellow citizens suffering from pollution. We should use our voices to find a solution to make everyone's lives better." What is the use of data, medical knowledge, scientific exploration, if not for the greater good of our fellow citizens? We know that coal dust is dangerous. This is not new information. We know coal miners can contract a black lung disease. Disease causes the affected patients to suffer and feel as though they are suffocating alive. We should not forget the risk and sacrifice these workers have made to meet our energy demands. What is new information to most is the lack of protection for communities around coal storage. And in that, in fact, communities close to open-air piles have risk of cardiac and respiratory disease related to exposures. Communities around the country are dealing with health impacts of coal storage without any safety standard or true regulation. Curtis Bay, Baltimore, Maryland, where there's a large coal storage facility, which not only suffered a large explosion in twenty-twenty-one, but has been found by Johns Hopkins to spread dust through the community, and documented by scientists with the help of pretty scrappy high school kids with sticky tape and a high-powered microscope. It is to our benefit that we look to a Carnegie Mellon peer-reviewed paper, which highlights Cumberland County, Maine, as having health damages from coal storage up to eleven million dollars per year. I've discussed our pile with the author of this paper, no fee required, about a pile, and verified his, this figure with him. You can ask an expert when you're diagnosed with a rare cancer, should I be concerned about this? I asked him, should I be concerned about our neighborhood being close to the district?
Speaker has thirty seconds.
Okay. Our petition shows solidarity throughout our neighborhoods, that Portland, in Portland, clean air is priceless. Every storm drain in Portland says dumps into Casco Bay. To prevent individuals from dumping hazardous materials to our harbor, it is time we ask our largest corporations to do the same. I thank you for your time, and I hope my neighbors and citizens of Portland understand how much their health means to me. Thank you.
Are you accepting comment from more people?
Of course.
My name is John Hink. I live on Pine Street in the West End. Mayor Mark Dianne, City Councilors, thank you for your attention to this and the opportunity to testify today. I appear before you to urge this council to adopt the ordinance to require that all industrial coal delivery, handling, and storage of more than one ton of coal occur under permanent covering. City Councilors should take this action to protect the health of city residents. It's caused, the threat is caused by coal dust associated with the offloading of the coal from vessels docked at Cassidy Point. As you know, the offloaded coal currently is stored in open piles, often for months, and eventually loaded onto trains bound for the paper mill in Rumford, Maine. Storage and handling of coal gives rise to fugitive emissions of coal particulates that spread on the winds and present serious hazards to public health. Storage and handling of coal produces toxic dust that increases the PM-two-point-five air pollution in the City of Portland, and also, incidentally, all of the towns along the train track route that coal shipments take. Any level of PM-two-point-five is associated with poor health. Exposure to coal particulates is associated with increases in premature death, ischemic heart disease, asthma, lung disease, cancer, pneumonia, and bronchitis, dementia, stroke, preterm births, diabetes, and metabolic syndrome. One national study of the handling and stockpiling of coal demonstrates an increase of premature mortality within a twenty-five-mile radius of coal stockpiles with an annual health-related cost of five hundred dollars per ton, I mean, yeah, five hundred dollars per ton of coal. The study is Mueller, two thousand and eighteen. Studies have also shown that health improves when the level of PM-two in the air declines. Spreg has not used best practices at the site when handling coal. It has entirely been citizens like Ms. Suther and others who have monitored what's gone on with those coal piles. And when they have caught on fire, it is often public that identifies that, and not, for example, the state. You know, best practices include use of wind barriers, closed unloading facilities, and covered conveyors, as well as the regular spraying with surfactants. I see my time is running out, and I thank you for having had this opportunity.
George Rowe, not too far away from this, but I don't think, I think the Hill, one good thing about living in Bayside is, is the coal dust probably doesn't get to us. Everything else does, but. So I don't think you're ready to pass this. I do want to ask you to let this debate play out, because this debate is the debate that we're having about most everything in Portland, and since the nineteen-eighties, basically. Of course, in the eighties, it was all about the working waterfront, and whether to redevelop it for people to live on the waterfront. And everyone said, "No, we can't have people living on the waterfront. That would hurt our working waterfront." Well, this is the working waterfront. This is what a working waterfront looks like. It's dirty, it's unpleasant, it's loud. And the fact that the West End, where a lot of affluent people have chosen to live, does not mean that all that stuff has to shut down abruptly to suit their, their preferences. There are jobs at the other end of this coal pile. And unless the City of Portland wants to pay reparations to the working-class folks up in Rumford, you know, that's what's going to happen. I mean, this, if they can't have access to coal economically, then the people that own the paper mill are going to just shut it down, because that is an old paper mill. All the new paper mills are in Brazil and China, because we basically made it easy to ship these jobs elsewhere. You know, our national politics basically has gone pretty sideways because of these kinds of debates. If you have money, and you have time, and you have access to lawyers, you can gin up things where your backyard is safe. But the problems don't go away, they go somewhere else. So the people in Brazil and China are now dealing with the coal piles, or all of the, you know, downwind effects of paper production. But, you know, the people up in Rumford, they're going to be asking, "Hey, why'd you kill?" And actually, what's going to be even more interesting is, we're going to see probably more homeless people coming down from that community. Because when their economic livelihoods are destroyed, where they're going to go to the social services center. So we need to have this debate. I don't think you have had any independent study done about whether this awful dusk is from, you know, from the, you know, the all the VOCs from the tank farms, the thousands and thousands of diesel trucks that go by, you know, the parkways and the highways that pass at the foot of the West End. We don't have any independent verification. We have some self-interested people who are making a good point. But it's hilarious that in the City of Portland, like, we venerate our coal history, the coal built Portland. The historic preservation people will make sure that your little coal chute on your building has to be preserved when you're restoring your building in the West End, because, oh, God forbid, we, you know, forget the legacy of coal. But we don't want any of that stuff happening today. So I think you have to tread very carefully here. Thank you.
Is there anyone upstairs that wishes to speak on this order? All right, then. To the floor.
Hello. My name is Todd Dana, and I'm the property owner of 128 Cassidy Point Drive in Portland. My building directly abuts the open coal pile located on the western waterfront. I'm here to offer a firsthand account of the ongoing coal dust emissions from that site, which are not only a persistent nuisance, but a direct threat to health, cleanliness, and the environmental integrity of the area. Despite Spreg Energy's assurances of containment and mitigation, I experience firsthand on a regular basis the fine coal dust that escapes the pile and settles on my property. Even with my building sealed tightly, all windows closed, sealed, and insulated, I still find the coal dust penetrates the interior space. It settles on window sills, floors, and surfaces inside the building. This is not an occasional occurrence, it's a constant and worsening issue, particularly on windy days when the pile is being unloaded and loaded, which is often. The most visible evidence appears during the winter. After a fresh snowfall, you can clearly see a layer of black coal dust settling on top of the snow. It doesn't take long, often less than a day, for the white surface around my property to turn visibly gray or blackened. It's jarring to witness such an immediate and obvious impact on the natural environment. I've also observed a muddy coal sludge around the pile after significant rainfall, and I have no doubt that some of this muddy sludge makes its way into the Ford River. Coal dust is also visible on the vehicles in my parking lot nearly every day, especially after a strong breeze from the direction of the pile. I return to find a thin coating of coal dust on windshields, hoods, roofs of the cars parked. You can run a finger across the glass and come up with black residue. This is clearly airborne particulate matter from the open pile, traveling through the air and settling on the surrounding area. This contamination doesn't just affect surfaces, it affects air quality, human health, and the livability of this part of the city. And while this coal pile may serve a specific industrial, albeit outdated, purpose, I believe there must be a way to balance that with the basic right of neighboring property owners and residents to clean air and a safe environment. As someone directly impacted, I contest that the current conditions are unacceptable. I urge the Council to take immediate steps to mitigate this problem, whether through better containment measures, covering the coal pile, enhanced dust suppression systems, or reconsidering the use of the site altogether, something must change. Thank you for your time, and I hope my experience underscores the urgency of addressing this environmental and public health issue on Portland's waterfront.
I'm going to go upstairs first. There is a speaker. There is a speaker.
My name is Phelps Turner. I live on Owls Nest Road, and I'm an environmental advocate at Conservation Law Foundation. This coal pile is a danger to public health and safety, and this danger is hiding in plain sight. You've already heard about some of the negative health effects of the fugitive coal dust. There are also other serious risks associated with this coal pile. Like oil, coal is a combustible fossil fuel. Coal piles can spontaneously combust and burn due to oxidization, a process where the coal reacts with oxygen. We heard from Councilor Phillips about a fire that broke out at the coal pile last year. Fortunately, that fire was contained. But imagine for a moment if it had not been contained and the devastation that could have ensued. We need only think about our neighbors to the north, in Lac Magantique, Quebec, to understand the devastating effects of fires arising from the ignition of fossil fuels being stored in the middle of our cities. As the city of Portland grapples with this issue, it's also important to think about our fellow Maine residents. The coal in this pile is being used to power a facility in Rumford. When the coal is burned, it pollutes the air in and around Rumford. That facility already relies on less polluting energy sources, so it can and should eliminate the use of coal. Eliminating the coal pile here will help eliminate the use of coal in Rumford. And at the regional level, New Englanders recently received the good news that the region will be free of coal-fired power plants by 2028. That's when Granite Shore Power will close Merrimack Station, a coal-fired power plant in Bow, New Hampshire. After decades of reliance on coal, which pollutes the air and causes climate change, New England needs and deserves to be coal-free. However, as long as this coal pile sits here in downtown Portland and the coal is burned up in Rumford, New England cannot and will not be coal-free. I'd like to give a special thank you to the advocacy of Ms. Southard and many of the other residents in Portland. For the health and well-being of the people of Portland, of Maine, and of New England, I urge the city to pass the ordinance and mark the beginning of the end of coal storage in Portland. Thank you.
Next speaker on the floor.
Haven't been here in years and twice in one night. I'm Kiptis Air, president of the West End Neighborhood Association. I'm also retired from a career in public health and past president of the Maine Public Health Association, so I'm here to support this vote and encourage you to take the vote tonight to possibly to remove, do whatever you can with the coal pile on the waterfront. Coal dust may be the most studied occupational and environmental health risk. We know that it's associated with black lung disease, COPD, bronchitis, psilocyphosis, and emphysema. While most of the studies are of occupational risk, Sarah mentioned the study of a community in Baltimore, which studied airborne particles that were within a mile of a facility being detectable as microscopic particles. And of course, the smallest particles are the ones that get in your lungs and stay All of the West End neighborhood is within a mile of this facility, so we are all at There's every reason to believe that coal dust is drifting into our neighborhood. The study in Baltimore found that when it was most disturbed and when it was most windy was the most dangerous times. We don't control the wind direction, so I would say we are undoubtedly breathing in coal dust. Coal is also polluting, as was mentioned before, and is used to generate energy. And we are on the verge, as the previous speaker mentioned, of being coal-free in New England, and there's every reason we should be. As far as I know, we don't have any coal mines. We don't have a strong history of burning coal as a major source of fuel in Maine, and I don't think we have a coal miner constituency. So I think the proposed regulation gives the consumers plenty of time to change. So I ask you to please protect our neighborhood and pass this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this order? Just so you'll know, this speaker, then I'm going to go upstairs, and then you'll be third. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dian, Councilor Phillips. My name is Dr. Colin Phillips. I'm a board-certified internal medicine cardiologist and interventional cardiologist. I am on the Board of Physicians for Social Responsibility in Maine, and I am the past governor of the American College of Cardiology Maine Chapter and leader of the Climate Change and Cardiovascular Disease Work Group. I treat heart attacks where patients are brought back from the brink of death. We do so through teamwork. Our mantra is "Time is muscle," and the faster we open up the blood artery, the better the patient does. Some days, we have lots of heart attacks, and the teamwork is imperative. Air pollution causes heart attacks. Worldwide, over four million people die every year due to air pollution. Reducing air pollution reduces heart attacks. I'm here to talk about another emergency and another form of teamwork. Industrial coal dust is a citywide emergency. It's happening in real time, right now. Two hundred and fifty years ago, coal fueled the industrial revolution. Today, not only do we have cleaner alternatives, we now, or sources of energy, we now have data demonstrating just how dangerous that coal dust is. We can no longer turn a blind eye to it. Three years ago, we contacted the author of the peer-reviewed journal article from Carnegie Mellon University documenting the dangers of coal storage handling. And as was going to be mentioned earlier, when we asked the author of that paper, how serious should we take this? They said, "Take it seriously. This is a problem." These damages amount to $11 million a year in health costs. They take the form, as you've heard already, of reversible lung diseases, asthma, high blood pressure, heart attacks, and early mortality. And even small increases in that particulate matter can cause those effects. Now is the time for action to stop this ongoing emergency in Portland, Maine, with this fugitive coal dust. When it comes to teamwork, we enjoy the support of the Sierra Club, the conservation law firm, and a team of dedicated neighbors and volunteers who collected over 1,800 signatures of citizens who support this act to end fugitive coal dust. Today, we're asking the city council to continue with this teamwork and pass the act to end fugitive coal dust and take definitive steps to protect our neighborhood. Let's respond to this emergency with teamwork and improve health for all. Thank you for your time.
Chair goes upstairs.
Thank you, Mayor Dian. Again, my name is Andrew Zahra. I'm the executive director of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. BCM works statewide to make Maine a safer, healthier place, more connected for people who walk, bike, and roll. But what does this have to do with coal? The truth is, you cannot ask people to walk, bike, or roll if the very air that they breathe along those routes is polluted with coal dust. Clean, breathable air is essential for safe transportation, as would be bike lanes, sidewalks, or crosswalks. I'm here tonight to express our strong support of Order 382526 and to urge you to adopt this ordinance to require the permanent covering of the 45,000-ton coal pile on Portland's waterfront and to phase out coal storage entirely by 2030. For us, this is about more than just energy policy. It's about the health and safety of the people who live, work, and move through Portland every single day. The uncovered coal pile sits less than a mile from three schools and three health centers, meaning thousands of children, families, and seniors are directly exposed. This is not just a West End issue. Fugitive coal dust doesn't stop at the end of Commercial Street. Winds carry it across the peninsula and into surrounding neighborhoods impacting residents far beyond the immediate area, sometimes upwards of 25 miles. Coal dust worsens asthma, heart disease, respiratory illness, and has been linked to increased cancer risks. Community members have reported coal dust coating their window sills, cars, playgrounds, as we've heard here this evening. In a city where we encourage people to walk, bike, and roll, we can't ask families to choose sustainable transportation if the air along their route is unsafe for them to breathe. This ordinance aligns directly with Portland's One Climate Future Plan and BCM's mission to make transportation safer, healthier, and more sustainable. It supports creating communities where active transportation is not just possible but encouraged because the air itself is clean and the environment supports it. So by adopting this ordinance, Portland has the opportunity again to lead, requiring permanent coverings by January 1, '27, or sooner, given the mayor's amendment in the packet. And fully ending coal storage by 2030 is a balanced and responsible approach. It protects our health now, and it secures a more sustainable future for generations to come. So I ask you all to vote yes on this order. Again, tonight, you can make Portland that's a place where people-powered transportation thrives, not just because the infrastructure supports it, but because the air we breathe sustains it. Thank you for your time.
To the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Dian and members of the Portland City Council. My name is Sarah Woodbury. I am the vice president of policy and advocacy for Defend Our Health. Defend Our Health is a Maine-based nonprofit who works to make sure that everyone has equal access to safe food, safe drinking water, safe products, and healthy homes. And we are here to testify in support of this amendment. You've heard about the health impacts of the coal dust itself. I do also just want to point out that coal and coal dust can contain toxic pollutants such as arsenic, cobalt, mercury, and radium. These pollutants can lead to health issues such as kidney and lung issues, cardiovascular issues, and increased risks of certain types of cancer, including kidney cancer, which is, arsenic does that, and we have really high rates of kidney cancer here in the state of Maine because we have a lot of arsenic already in our land, and so we should not be adding to that, as well as lung cancer. Unburned coal stockpiles can be a source of fine particulates, either due to wind blowing over them or for being moved and handled on-site. This means that close-by neighbors, schools, and health centers can be directly impacted by the increased concentration of the fine particulates from the Portland coal pile site. The fine particulate matter can get into people's lungs and hearts, affecting cardiovascular and respiratory health. I would point out that children and already sick people are among the most vulnerable to this, so if you have asthma and other issues, you're going to be more highly affected. And while coal ash is not what you're dealing with in Maine, you're dealing with coal dust. In Rumford, they will be dealing with coal ash because the coal is getting burned up there, and coal ash is, according to Earth Justice, some of the largest toxic industrial waste stream in the U.S. It is the largest toxic industrial waste stream in the U.S. And I would also point out that, you know, there were some previous comments about needing to continue to use this. We have six fully functioning paper mills here in the state of Maine, Sappy, Hudamaki, and Waterville, and Jay, and other places. None of them utilize coal to run their paper mill. It is outdated, and it is also, my understanding, that Sprague is only using it for about 6% of their energy, so it's completely unnecessary to continue to use that for their production and use in the paper mill there. So... And I would also say, even if you discount the health impacts, which you shouldn't, the environmental impacts of coal use are well documented. Air pollution affects us all. Climate change affects us all. Reducing sources of increased pollution by requiring permanent covering of all industrial coal is a common sense measure to protect the health of Portland residents, and we urge you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Is there anyone above who wants to comment?
Max Twine, West End resident again. For me, this is a pretty simple one. Sprague wants cheap fuel to power their plant. They are using that cheap fuel and pushing the costs off to Portland residents, including women, children, elderly people in the West End. I am the proud parent of two small children, seven and five. My daughter goes to Reiki. She spends many hours a day playing outside on the Reiki playground, less than a mile away from this coal pile. My number-one job is to keep them safe, and every day, I train them how to stay safe. I can't protect my children from environmental dangers like this coal pile. From my perspective, you all on the council have an opportunity and an obligation to act to protect the most vulnerable populations in Portland, and you can do that today. So I just ask that you support this ordinance, and we can move forward for a brighter, healthier future for our kids. Thank you.
To the floor.
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor, city staff. My name is Bill Weber. I live in North Deering District 5, and again, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Portland Climate Action Team, PCAT. PCAT, with over 100 members in Portland, supports One Climate Future Climate Action Plan and promotes the many strategies in the plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city. Our organization fully supports the goals of the Act to Control Fugitive Coal Dust and is in favor of the council passing the ordinance amendments in their entirety tonight. PCAT collected signatures, held educational webinars, and generally promoted the amendment. In my polling location in District 5, which arguably is the most conservative district in Portland, I heard comments like, "We still burn coal in Maine?" and "We need to get greenhouse gases under control." Over 70% of the voters that I spoke with were in favor of the amendment, and they wondered why the city council wouldn't just pass it. Well, tonight is your chance. You've heard from other speakers tonight about how coal dust is causing property damage, unclean conditions, and health problems in the community near the site. But this isn't just a local problem. This is also a city and statewide concern. Portland is a link in a supply chain that pollutes the air we breathe and the water we drink and recreate in. The coal passing through our port, which is mismanaged at the Cassidy Point facility, is part of a supply chain that increases the emissions of toxic pollutants like carbon monoxide, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and heavy metals like zinc and lead. The coal, which is necessary to improve combustion efficiency for burning tires, not making paper. This coal is used to dispose of tires, many of which are coming from out of state. It also increases greenhouse gas emissions. The burning of coal, coal combustion with tires, has led to an increase in toxic emissions. In fact, in 2022, Maine was the only state in New England that had an increase in toxic chemical releases. Coal-combusting tires with coal produces a zinc-heavy ash. I suspect these paper mills are acting as disposal facilities for discarded tires and are getting paid to dispose of those tires that are imported from other states. The mills are actually turning a profit for polluting our state. Other Maine mills have abandoned coal combustion coal with tires and have switched to more efficient boilers or cleaner fuels. The Sappy Mill in Somerset has pursued similar efficiencies and no longer burns coal, an a tire-derived fuel. For the sake of our planet and our children, we must abandon the use of coal and these practices. The council should vote tonight to pass the amended ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide comment? Just for the chair's information, how many more are waiting in queue? One, two. Anyone upstairs? Seeing none, all right. Thank you. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. Greetings, Mayor Dian, Manager West, council colleagues. My name is Andrew Butcher, and I'm a resident of Portland's West End. I live within a quarter mile of the Cassidy Point Terminal and coal pile. My children walk to school at Reiki and King. My wife and I successfully recruited her elderly parents to live in the neighborhood and were passionate advocates of healthy, connected, and safe communities, which is why it pains us to shutter our windows and avoid going outside in the southwest wind because of the stifling stench of bitmes coal that coats our window sills, discolors fresh snow, and serves as evidence of the fugitive coal dust. We're grateful and supportive of Portland's strong and growing working waterfront. As a neighbor in immediate proximity to the Ford River, we've endorsed recent developments such as the expansion of Portland Yacht Services and the Cold Storage Facility. Those are signs of the necessary balance Portland can achieve supporting our legacy industry while ensuring a healthy quality of life. The open-air coal pile is strikingly out of balance with all of Portland's public health, safety, and sustainability objectives. There are reams of evidence, some of which you've already heard tonight, that demonstrate the real harmful impacts of fugitive coal dust and why no community should tolerate such an avoidable toll on public health. This is especially true in immediate proximity to some of the largest concentrations of residents, affordable housing, medical institutions, as well as schools, small businesses, and the vast majority of the rest of the workers along the waterfront. Thank you for heating neighborhood pleas. We urge you to unanimously support the proposed amendment before you tonight.
Next speaker. Somebody's got to go. Somebody's got to go.
I'll let Sean go last. All right. Been editing this a lot, so I'll try to be brief. I'm Matt Cannon. I live on Munjoy Hill, and I'm here representing Sierra Club Maine today, over 22,000 supporters and members statewide. We're also a member, founding member of the Blue Green Alliance, which is a coalition focused on ensuring a just transition for workers as we start to phase out fossil fuels. So I take jobs very seriously. Our Beyond Coal campaign has been hugely successful in retiring hundreds of coal plants around the country and stopping new ones from being built. Recently, grassroots organizing and legal action has led to the retirements of the last two coal plants in New England, as previously mentioned, in New Hampshire. However, this coal pile and its use at the mill in Rumford remain. The measure before you tonight has been brought forth by Coal Free Portland, a local grassroots coalition working to rid us of the last industrial coal pile, and the only one in New England with no plan to close. The truth is, this pile is a relic of the past. It harms our environment, our public health, and the single corporation that sources coal is fully able to burn other fuels instead. As mentioned, it's 6% of their fuel mix. While this ordinance will not prevent ND Paper in Rumford from burning coal, we do have a chance to stop industry from polluting our communities today and push them to do better. As mentioned, Sappy and other paper mills have made advances in fuel mixes that do not harm our communities as much as coal. I just want to, yeah, so we want you to, we appreciate you taking this into consideration, and we hope you do vote to adopt. And I just want to say a special word of thanks to all the folks who organized around this for many years, including Sarah, who you heard from, and many other community members, for their tireless efforts. Organizing takes a lot of time and a lot of conversations, and it's been really inspiring to be a part of a grassroots effort like this. This is a reasonable solution to phase out coal in Portland. It represents democracy in action and is the will of the people. It's aligned with our One Climate Future Goals, Maine's Climate Action Plan, and the broader global need to avert the worst consequences of the climate catastrophe. It's meaningful local action that we must take. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dion and members of the city council. My name is Sean Mahoney. I'm with the Conservation Law Foundation. Mayor Dion, earlier this evening, you talked about the need to govern by rules, and one couldn't agree more. And tonight, you have an ordinance before you that's a perfect example of the need to govern by rules. There are no rules that govern or that control emissions from the coal pile today. It's why the Maine Department of Environmental Protection hasn't been able to do anything about it. So what you have today is an example of neighbors, local businesses, looking at what's the way that we can control this. Getting together, going out, doing the work to get signatures, to explain to people what the risks are, to get an overwhelming number of signatures, to bring the ordinance before you, to either put on the ballot or to be adopted tonight. Obviously, tonight, you're hopefully going to exercise your authority, your ability under the rules, to adopt the ordinance as it is and not put it forward to referendum in the fall. It's also, this ordinance is also a perfect example, as Corporation Council hopefully will tell you, of Portland exercising its home rule authority to take action to address issues affecting public health, public welfare, and public property. So we see this as an example of how things should work. We appreciate the fact that all of you have met with members of, supporters of the ordinance, and we look forward to moving forward. And I will just say, I'm going to have to leave early because I have to be at my town council meeting, which started at 6:00. So thank you very much.
That's understandable. All right. Chair would inquire if anyone else wishes to provide public comment. All right, seeing none. Chair would seek motion for passage as an emergency.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Ali, seconded by Counsel Pelletier.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is for Order 38?
382526.
Thank you.
All right then. This. Are you speaking about the other amendment?
No, I just wanted, based on some of the discussion tonight, I just want to do a quick little procedural note, just to make, just to orient folks as to why we're talking about both of these orders.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. So currently, before the council are two orders. One is one that's been on the agenda before. It was scheduled tonight for a public hearing. That is Order 26, which is the order to set an election date for the Citizen Initiative. When presented with Citizen Initiative, the council has basically three choices. One is to vote to put it onto the ballot, which would be at the next election in November. Another one is to adopt it outright and make it part of the city code. Another one is to prepare a countermeasure and put both measures on the ballot. And one of them would, whichever one received the most votes would win. In this case, several councilors mentioned to my office an interest in passing the ordinance as drafted, as proposed, rather than putting it on the ballot. And so we prepared, in light of that, we prepared Order 38. Typically, approval of ordinances requires two separate reads, which is the reason why earlier, before the public comment, there was a motion made and approved to waive the second read. And so tonight, if the council approves the adoption of Order 38, the adoption of the ordinance, then it will, there will be no need to take up Order 26. At that point, we'll be asking for a motion to postpone indefinitely. One other thing that's in the backup is a, an amendment that we prepared for Mayor Dion, making the effective date of the ordinance December 1, which is approximately the time that the Citizen Initiative would become effective if it was approved by the voters in November. The rule is that they become effective 30 days after the, after the election becomes final. So with that, and so, yeah, so the effective date of December 1, that's the amendment that we'll ask the mayor to make. Other than that, happy to answer questions. I just wanted to draw the council's attention to those items.
There goes my speech. All right then. These will be questions to Corporation Council that have to do with the process of our decisions. Counsel Phillips.
Thanks, Corporation Council. I just want to make sure that I'm clear that we're voting on Order 38 first, right? Because we don't have to, if that went, okay, you get me.
That's correct.
Counsel Pelletier.
Is the reason, this is just in the weeds, but is there a reason, is the reason that it's a separate order because there's an amendment, and if we were to pass, if we're to motion to adopt within this amendment? I'm getting a shake of the head.
The reason is because the order ends up being much different. The order for, on the Citizens Initiative, is an order simply placing the item on the ballot. This order is very different. It's actually adopting a council order. It requires two reads. So it's really, it's sort of a mixture of, you know, substance and procedural requirements. But it doesn't have anything to do necessarily with the amendment itself. It's really a separate order where the council is going to be adopting the ordinance rather than taking the more administrative role of just placing it on the ballot.
And so just like, as long as we adopt an ordinance that essentially covers what the, what it would have done, then we are allowed to just like, not send something to the ballot?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Have you, while we're discussing process, will you clarify then, let's have a possibility. We pass this pending motion with the amendment. So now we have an emergency. Order passed with a new date that it goes to effect. And then the second motion will have to do with indefinitely postponing the order that would have placed this on the ballot.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And then the motion to postpone indefinitely kills the other order, Order 26.
All right. Because we discussed this in planning for the meeting, and it was our collective decision to get this particular order first, because then that answers all the questions at once. Then it's just procedural after that. Counsel Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is that the choices that we have when a Citizens Initiative comes forward are outlined in our charter. Is that correct? Or is it in the quote of ordinances?
It's, it's, it's not in the charter. It's in Chapter 9. Well, kind of a mixture of the charter and Chapter 9 and the council rules, really. But the council always has the option to adopt an ordinance, whether or not it was written by a citizens group or not. It's one of the legislative rights and duties that the council has. The preparation of the competing measure or placing it on the ballot, those issues are addressed in Chapter 9, which addresses the Citizens Initiative process.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at here is that essentially what we're doing is we're taking a Citizens Initiative. If this should pass, we would take a Citizens Initiative and vote to postpone indefinitely. That is not one of the covered things that we can do as in response to a Citizens Initiative. Is that correct? I mean, we could do that with any Citizens Initiative that came forward, if that's the case.
If, if the council adopts the ordinance outright. So once that's done, there's nothing for the citizens to vote on.
Right, but we can't, we can't amend a Citizens Initiative and adopt it. And so you're asking us to make an amendment to the initiative. I'm just concerned we're not actually following procedure to the letter here.
It's, it's, it's not a substantive amendment. It's, it's actually putting it into effect at the same time that it would go into effect if it passed. If the Citizens Initiative goes on the, goes on the ballot and is approved by the voters in November, it would become effective 30 days later somewhere.
What's the date of the?
November 4th, so 30 days.
Yeah, somewhere around December 3rd or 4th is when it would become effective. And so the suggestion is to make it effective on December 1st tonight, rather than have it become effective in 30 days, as is typically the case. That also allows some of the things that we've talked about, which is taking it to the committee to discuss, to review it and have the council, or have the committee discuss it and come back perhaps with amendments down the road. I imagine those wouldn't happen until sometime in late December at the earliest. Seems actually not likely, but probably sometime later, later in the, later in the fall or early winter.
Okay, so I guess just to be clear, because there's a lot of legal jargon here, I do not want to set a precedent tonight for a Citizens Initiative to come forward and then to have one of the options be that the council just makes it disappear. I want to be really clear that we are not setting that precedent because that could damage our trust.
No, this is an option that has been presented to the council every time a Citizens Initiative comes forward. I don't know that I can say the last time it was actually used, maybe...
It hasn't been used, but I used to, when I would work on these with the council before, we'd always put three orders on the council agenda. One order would be adopting the ordinance. One more order would be sending it to the ballot by, just by vote or by action of the council. And the third order would be the possibility of a competing measure being added. So all of those options would be in front of you. They're always in front of you, and they're through Chapter 9. They're spelled out there. That was actually put in place by the voters in the 1950s, I believe. And that can only be amended by them as well. And so that, those have always been the options before the council. I can't specifically recall a time where we've done it and adopted it outright, usually gets sent to the voters, but the council always has that option. And then once they adopt the matter, then you have the ability to amend it. That's, that is the ability under Roberts.
After 30 days, right? Or after it becomes?
After, after the effective date.
We're preemptively amending it right now when we're adopting.
No, because in this case, you're just adding an effective date in the order, not in the ordinance itself, just saying it would be effective in December.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make real clear that we're not jeopardizing the legality of this process.
Counsel Pelletier.
Yeah, I also had the same question, but in Section 936, Part E, it's the passage by the city council, the desired ordinance shall put an end to all proceedings under the petition. So that limits it to, we can pass the exact language of the ordinance, nothing else. Amending it gets weird, as we know, but we're not actually amending it. We're just saying effective date. So I feel very good about this.
All right then.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I do want, I do want to make it clear that in the future, the council is free to amend the ordinance if it desires. So just to make sure that that is clear.
Any other questions on process? Seeing none. All right then. I'll go back to the beginning, or at least somewhere in the beginning. I'll seek a motion in a second to pass Order 382526 as an emergency.
So moved.
All right, Ali and Pelletier have the. All right, Chair will defer to Corporation Council. As I sponsor this amendment, he'll explain it. He has already, but let's do it again.
Yeah, the amendment, as I said before, is simply to make the effective date of the ordinance December 1, 2025. I'll also point out that in the, in the Citizens Initiative ordinance, the petitioners put in there a date of January, I don't have it handy, sorry, January of 2027, before the requirements go into effect. And so as a practical matter, this effective date is, there's still going to be another year after, after this effective date before it becomes applicable to the coal pile.
All right then. Is there a second for the motion to amend the emergency order with this effective date language?
Second.
Okay. So myself, as a, as a first, Counsel Phillips is a second. Any discussion on that particular amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by hand. All right. So now we move to the major, or I should say the order itself, 382526. We have motion for passage already vetted. Now it's time for our discussion. Of course, Counsel Bullen.
You know, I just wanted to say enthusiastically support this. Thanks to colleagues who worked really hard on this. It's, we had many presentations in S&amp;T. We've had Maine Environmental Protection Agency come to our meetings. We've tried a lot of avenues, and so appreciate the citizens who put this together, because we were coming up short in committee with our options. And so this was clearly the way. And when we think about coal and power in this part of Maine, I drive through Roxbury, Maine, often. I don't know if people know where that is, but there happens to be a ton of windmills there, and it's right next to Rumford. And you can buy power from the Roxbury windmills. So just putting that out there, that's an option. And hopefully that this, in addition to, I'm an asthma mom, so I get it, like it stinks to have coal dust in the air for asthmatic kids. But I really worry about workplace safety. It's a passion project of mine to make sure that workplaces are really safe. And so hopefully, this inspires Sprague and other companies that have pretty hazardous conditions for their workers to, to improve those overall. So I'll be quiet because the mayor wants me to be. But thanks to everybody who worked really hard on this.
I've tried so nice to be to you today, right? Anyone else wishing to comment? Counsel Pelletier.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into putting this together. And I enjoy setting this precedent of adopting. I think this council historically maybe has a reputation for standing in the way of things that are popular. And it's great to see the sort of upswell of community support that's going into this and that we're able to work alongside you all. So I will be very much supporting this. And again, thank you.
Counsel Fornia, then Counsel Ali. Counsel Fornia, then Counsel Ali.
Thank you. Thank you so much, all of you, for all the information. My tribe, the Navajo Nation, is actually the third-largest coal producer in the U.S., and what that has created for our people who are already challenged is generations of health issues. And so I also appreciate the comments others have made about when you take away these industries and when you move something that a people rely on, that does create an economic desert, especially for a challenging people. And so my hope is, as we're taking these mitigation measures, we can also work with these producers as they're shifting to other industries, more clean fuels, to look at the workers, because I do think it is critical to make sure that the people who are currently in those jobs have something else to fall back on, have different training, have something to keep supporting their families, because we know as the coal plants have closed on the Navajo Nation, the different mining things have closed on the Navajo Nation, which are wonderful, the harms far outweigh the benefits. But there was no remediation or no mitigation or support for the people that were then left behind, and so more families were thrown into poverty. So not only were they unhealthy, but they were also extremely poor. And so I am hoping that as we continue to move this forward and hopefully move coal out of Portland completely, and then move to cleaner energy sources, that we help the workers who are in those spaces and their families find other means of income and other sources for these new industries. And I think that's how we keep families sustainable moving forward. But really, again, just appreciate the efforts. I'm glad to support this tonight.
Counsel Ali.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank the individuals that kept pushing for the city to take action on this. It's been, I think, almost three years with email between the city and then the state and the community. And in the process of doing this, I appreciate them agreeing when Counselor Phillips and myself, and I think Counselor Sykes reached out and said, can we just pass it at a council level, which makes it easy, nobody have to campaign for it, so that we will pass it tonight. So I am thanking them for that.
Counsel Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to put a finer point on the amount of time and effectiveness that's gone into advocacy around this issue. This is probably, in some sense, the end of the road for three years of hard work by a lot of good people in Portland. And I just want to highlight how effective it's been. It's a group of citizens that identified an issue, took the time to really understand it from all sides of the issue, and came up with a practical solution. To me, those are kind of the three hallmarks of effective advocacy, at least when it comes to getting my support for issues. So I wanted to just highlight the hard work that went into this from all the folks that we have heard from. I'm also happy to support it, because all of our people deserve a clean environment and good health, whether they are the wealthy on the West End or many of the other people who live on the West End of different socioeconomic classes. So I just want to stand up for everyone who does live in that part of the city, as I do represent people from all over Portland. So for those reasons, I just wanted to say thanks for the work and I'll be supporting this.
Counsel McNevich.
I'm just going to echo that. Thanks for all the hard work on this. The need for clean air is paramount. I've been watching a lot of construction around my house lately of unremediated soil, and I think of the coal pile, because we've got dust coming up when they're moving things around. And, you know, ensuring community health is, it can be done in some really basic ways, and this is one of them, it's common sense. And I will, just to tag off Counsel Grant, the fact that this has come here, not only are we not trying to amend it beyond the effective date and not having a big debate about it, but just adopting it outright, that's an incredible achievement. If you look at the history of referenda in Portland, so you've done a really, really great job, and I'm happy to vote for this.
Counsel Phillips.
A surprise. Thank you, Mayor. I'm so excited to be able to vote for this. I just, again, I'm not going to reiterate all of the comments that we heard and all of the work that has been done. This didn't start with me. This started a long time ago under the leadership of Counsel Zaro. I don't know if he's still here or not, but it started under the leadership of Counsel Zaro when he was the Chair of Sustainability and Transportation. And upon me becoming the Chair of S&amp;T, when I met with him, he said, Virginia, this is a priority. You need to reach out to Sarah, you need to really become educated about this, you need to go down and visit the coal pile, you need to do all those things. So when we're giving out all of the thank yous tonight, I want to make sure that we also give a thank you to Counsel Zaro, because he was also, you know, encouraging me to make this a priority, along with Sarah and everybody else. And so again, I'm so excited that we're doing this, and so I eagerly vote for this. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? All right. Seeing none. We'll take a roll call on this one. We'll need seven votes. Pass as an emergency.
Counsel Fornia.
Yes.
Counsel Grant.
Yes.
Counsel Sykes.
Yes.
Counsel Ali.
Yes.
Counsel Pelletier.
Yes.
Counsel McNevich.
Yes.
Counsel Bullet.
Yes.
Counsel Phillips.
Yes.
Your time.
Yes. All right. The Chair would now seek a motion for reference, a first and a second, to take Order 382526 to the S&amp;T Committee to consider potential amendments to the ordinance.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Phillips, seconded by Counsel Ali. Any discussion? Okay, it appears not. We'll vote by hand on this one. All those in favor, please signify. Passes unanimously. Chair would now seek a motion to postpone indefinitely, Order 262526.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Ali.
Second.
Second by Counsel Phillips. Discussion on the motion to postpone, seeing none. All those in favor, indefinite postponement. Passes unanimously. You're done. You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. See, they never say yes. They never stay. Clerk will now read Order 2392425.
Order 2392425, setting an election date on Amendment to Chapter 33 of the Portland City Code regarding an act to increase Portland's minimum wage, sponsored by the House and Economic Development Committee, Counsel Pius Ali, Chair.
Chair would seek motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Ali, seconded by Counsel Fornia. All those in favor of the motion to waive second reading. It's unanimous. Chair would now yield to Counsel Ali for comment from the committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this item has been to this council, and it was as a, other side of two items, and somewhere last year, and then it was early this year, and then it was referred to the Housing and Economic Development Committee, where we deliberated and brought this to full council, so that we can discuss that tonight and then see where it goes. We can either send it to the voters, or we can, are we allowed to adopt on this as well? Corporation Council have a question for you.
Sorry, say that again.
Are we allowed to, if we so choose, to adopt this, just like what we did with the previous item? If, no, why?
No, this is different. This, the minimum wage ordinance currently in effect was passed by Citizens Initiative back in 2020. It included an effective date of January of 2022. As a result of that, there's a five-year rule in Chapter 9, which says that the council can't amend, ordinance is passed by Citizens Initiative for five years, absent sending it back to the voters. And so what the council's doing tonight is exactly that, is voting on amendments that may or may not be approved by the council tonight, and then sending them to the voters for the November ballot.
Thank you. I'm asking so that if there's someone here or home watching is wondering, why did we adopt the other one, we didn't do that. So thank you for breaking it down.
Sure.
Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Ali. Chair will now seek public comment on this order.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Steve DeMello, I represent my family, DeMello's on the water. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight and listen to my thoughts on why you should not put this question of $20 minimum wage on the November ballot. I feel strongly that the minimum wage is driven by the market. I mean, we don't pay anybody the $15, $50 minimum wage that we have in Portland, except tipped workers. And if you don't know, because you hear a lot of rhetoric in that area, tipped worker in any restaurant, any tipped employee is the highest, they're the highest earners in a restaurant. So I couldn't hire a line cook at $15.50. You know, they start at $20 an hour, but that's not because of some government action, that's because that's the market. So that's probably my main, my main point I'd like to make, it's that the market forces drive the wages. I want to remind everybody that a tipped, excuse me, a minimum wage job is an entry-level job. So when you come to work at DeMello's as a dishwasher, you're going to start at $18 an hour. You don't stay there very long unless you like washing dishes, which I did for a lot of years. You move your way up, and that's how it works in the free market. I also have a concern about the neighboring towns, that the folks that run businesses that are close to the border, and I'm sure you hear from other people besides restaurant workers or restaurant operators, but it's just a really big competitive disadvantage. If there's an increase in the minimum wage, should be on a national level. State level, it's been, it's been batted around and established, you folks or this council has taken action in the past to make it higher than the state minimum wage, but I believe it's, it should be more universal and not just picking out a city at a time. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I'll go upstairs now.
Hello, my name's Buddy Moore, I live in District 3 on Neuss Street. So I'll start with a straightforward point. The MIT Living Wage Calculator states that a livable wage for the Portland metro area is just over $25 an hour. While the proposed $20 minimum wage still falls short of this, it's at the very least a step in the right direction. Study after study demonstrates the myriad positive socioeconomic effects of raising the minimum wage. There is broad consensus in the research that increasing the minimum wage does not lower employment rates and does not cause businesses to close their doors for good. What it does cause is stability, a higher quality of life, higher purchasing power for workers, and less poverty in our community. Why wouldn't you want this for our city? And while our current ordinance is tied to inflation, the base wage to which it is anchored is simply not livable. I personally supported the minimum wage referendum in 2020, but we've since seen a period of rapid inflation and increases to the cost of living. So the referendum in front of you today is not superfluous, it is, in fact, a course correction. I work in the food service industry, and contrary to what was previously said, I have and I know coworkers who make less than $20 an hour and who are struggling to pay their bills and buy themselves the things they need to live. A friend and coworker was literally selling his blood plasma to pay rent. People should not have to struggle like this. It is the role of elected officials to respond to the material facts on the ground, and the fact of the matter is, the very people who make our local economy run are being priced out. Raising the minimum wage is an incredibly popular policy. Unless this council takes action today, people will continue to lose housing, they will not be able to afford groceries for their families and for their children, they will not be able to purchase basic necessities, they will never be able to escape the vicious cycle that is being poor in this country. So I ask, on whose side does this council stand? Thank you.
Go to the floor.
Hi, thank you. My name's Nancy Walker. I live on Quebec Street in Portland, and I have the Maine Center for Economic Policy right up in this. I want to start by just reading the very short first paragraph, because there's something in there that really surprised me. Counsel Ali has introduced an amendment which would only apply the proposed minimum wage increase to employers with at least 50 employees. Maine Center for Economic Policy does not recommend a tiered minimum wage system by size of employer. Firstly, vulnerable employers, workers deceive, firstly, vulnerable workers deserve a livable wage regardless of the size of their employer. Secondly, and this is the part that really surprised me, secondly, employer size is a poor predictor of the organization's financial capacity. Thirdly, the proposed tiering system would exclude a large number of workers from the new minimum wage. So, and reading down a little further, instead of having 17,000 Portland workers affected by an increase, that would reduce to only 6,600. So it clearly isn't just market forces that are work here. And then the second thing that really surprised me is, like so many people, I thought that younger employees would be the one, who would need a wage increase. Sorry, I'm stumbling around, I'm a little nervous. But the information says that 16 to 19-year-olds, the people who'd be affected would be 3,220 to 24, 6,925 to 34, 16,000, 35 to 44, 15,000, 45 to 54, 14,000, and 55 to 64, 14,000. So clearly, it isn't only younger workers who are starting and looking for a way to build themselves up as they go. And the other things I wanted to mention were that homelessness in Portland is very high. I know that apartment, housing prices are very high also. And my husband and I moved recently, about a year ago, and as we were looking for rents, we found the one that was a studio apartment we saw was renting for $1,440 a month. Now I know one person living in a studio apartment could not pay that rent if they're making $15.50 an hour. So because there are so many people who would be affected positively by increase.
The time's up.
Can I say two more words?
Two more words.
Okay, I'm asking the council to vote no on the amendment, and hopefully this will go positively in November. Thank you.
Next speaker. Is there anyone upstairs?
Thank you for having me speak tonight. My name's Danny Napolitano, I'm the manager at Bruno's Restaurant and Tavern here in Portland. I won't spend time telling you things you already know, that large corporations can more easily absorb additional costs while small independent businesses struggle to keep up. I also won't dwell on the ripple effect of higher operating costs, employee cutbacks, closures, relocations, or automation. And when I mention automation, I'm not just meaning burger-flipping robots, but those are out there. I'm talking more like AI. Even today, some local businesses are using AI to take reservations and phone orders. What concerns me as the most is the issue goes beyond small business. It impacts the entire Portland community, and increasing costs will inevitably drive up prices. up prices. Restaurants, retail shops, and grocery stores already run on thin margins. They cannot simply absorb higher expenses so the cost gets passed on to the customers, customers who will only see higher prices here in Portland, not the neighboring cities. And this doesn't just affect hourly wage workers, it affects retirees, salaried employees, volunteers, people unable to work, and even our unhoused neighbors. For them, there's no offset, just a higher cost in living. So I ask, beyond adding to Portland's distinction of having one of the highest minimum wages in the country, what does this really achieve? Thank you.
To the floor. For those of you upstairs, before you start, for those of you upstairs, if you could just stand up so I have an idea, that would be helpful. All right? I see you. Thank you. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Steve LeCatt. I'm a Portland resident. I also own Sarah here in Monument Square. My concern is this, there's, I think, you know, when it comes to talking about moving a coal pile, that is something that could potentially go out to the public to say whether they want that in their community or not. I don't think we make wage law through referendum. I think that's, it's wonderful that MIT has done studies, but I think if you're going to look at what matters in Portland, you need to do a study on Portland. It does have impact beyond just, it sounds great to say, let's just raise everybody's money, and we want, as an employer, I want my employees to do well, I want them to know that we are an employer that cares for and takes care of their staff and pays them. I don't have anybody that's even close to minimum wage. So it's not a concern for me, even if you change it to 20, all my employees are beyond that. But we can't just take that. If I move an entry-level dishwasher to 20, my other cooks are going to say, well, I'm experienced, I've been with you, I deserve more than entry level, and they're right. So now they're at 30, or whatever. It's my cost to go up that I have to pass along to customers, but now we're, we're setting wage law by referendum in one city, that starts pulling jobs outside the city, it impacts tourism, people, what does it cost to come be a tourist in Portland? It's everything. But if you're going to start putting rules like that, you have to look at the rest of it too, because property owners can go out and set whatever they want for property rates. We're not governing them by referendum. Can we, you know, are we going to set housing price limits by referendum? Probably not, but then they can't say, well, I'm just going to charge whatever I want here, and the employer has to now pay everybody more to afford that. I spent my college years here in Portland. I lived on Chandler's Wharf as a 23-year-old college kid with three roommates. You could do it. I was making $8 an hour. It was possible. So there's a lot more that's out of whack than just the minimum wage. If you're not going to look at it holistically, it doesn't make any sense, and this really should not go on the ballot as a referendum to, to just set that. My thoughts and opinions on it.
Upstairs.
My name is Evan Bullshweiler. I am Maine DSA's Portland Local Command Committee. I'm only, Portland Local Command Committee, also lives in Portland. I'm a previous Portland resident, and due to lack of good wages and affordable housing, I have been pushed out of the city. My wish is that one day I'll be able to move back here. The city, the state, the country is becoming rapidly, rapidly more and more unaffordable for working-class people. It feels like every corner we are being crushed, from Trump's ridiculous import taxes, cuts social services, price gouging corporations and landlords. I'm sure most people in this room have felt the pinch. The good news is that here, right now, we as a community can make a real difference in the lives of roughly 20,000 workers directly and tens of thousands more indirectly. You, as city councillors, have the power to stand up for workers and confidently say that while our country is being actively sacked by greedy oligarchs, you stood firm on the side of people that make the city run. We are trying to do this with council inputs and leadership, but if the council does not send a minimum wage increase to the workers through referendum, as a member of Maine DSA's Portland Local Command Committee, I will immediately push for us to organize and start collecting signatures and attempt to place even a more radical increase on the ballot for November 2026. And you and I should have no doubt that it would pass easily. Please, councillors, send $20 an hour to the pilots and help make this city more livable for the working people, not just the rich. Thank you.
George Rowe, Hanover Street. I think there's no question that, you know, workers, especially the entry level, deserve more, but again, you know, Portland is not an island. You know, Portland was losing population in the 1980 census. We had fewer people living in Portland than we had in 1920. And that was because, basically, all of our industry was leaving. There wasn't really a lot going on here. Fortunately, some of that industry made a big mess, and once that mess went away, suddenly the restaurants and, you know, the real estate actually became much more desirable, and that's, you know, basically the story since. But you guys have bigger things to be doing right now. This is a distraction because you think you can give people a raise when there isn't a job there. You, you know, I would like to be talking about what you're going to do about the warming shelter for our unhoused this winter, because I haven't seen any proposals, the summer's almost over. A lot of people keep talking about housing, housing, housing. Well, you guys have been terrible on housing. You know, all those people that were just up here a few moments ago, asking for their coal pile to be covered? That neighborhood was completely left out of any housing opportunity in your recode. Those million-dollar homes, they don't get new neighbors. That's why our real estate is expensive in this city. That's why we have a housing affordability problem.
Can we stay on topic?
Absolutely. So get back to work on the housing stuff. You know, some of you want to segregate housing on the arterials, on the noisy, dirty-
What does that have to do with the minimum wage?
It has everything to do with it. This is a distraction. You want to say you're for the working class while you refuse to let them live on Alba Street, and Chenery Street, and George Street, and all the nice places in North Dering that are going to get parks, while other people have to move to Raymond, and Gray, or out of state and live in Texas, where there's no, you know, abortion protections for women. They go there because of economic opportunity. That's why people were leaving Maine in the 1970s, because there was literally nothing for them here. And you're just creating that new cycle and patting yourself on the back. It's not, be careful what you wish for. I would love that. I hope the chamber, I hope Mr. DeMillo, they ask Susan Collins next year at election time what she's going to do about the federal minimum wage. That's where these people, hopefully, aren't hypocrites, they're going to come back. You should too. This is not something, what's the minimum wage in Harrison, Maine? What's the minimum wage in Rumford, Maine? You know, businesses just aren't going to be starting in Portland. We've already been losing many, many businesses in the last couple of years. We're going to lose more.
Time.
There's no minimum wage for a job that doesn't exist.
George, it's time. I appreciate how you circled back to minimum wage eventually. Anyone upstairs?
Hi, my name is Charlotte Ruddy, and I live on Leland Street in Portland. I want to speak in favor of the minimum wage increase to $20, and I also want to speak against any amendment that would cut off thousands of, uh, thousands of workers from benefiting from this change. No employer should be exempt from paying a living wage. If a business can't afford to pay its workers a living wage, then it can't afford to do business. If, we would never ask a supplier to sell its products at a loss so that a restaurant can afford to operate. Why should we expect workers to subsidize small businesses by accepting a sub-living wage for our region? As the cost of living continues to rise, everyone deserves to live with security, comfort, and dignity. Tens of thousands of workers need this pay raise in order to be able to do that in Portland. I'd like to thank councillors Phillips and Sykes for sponsoring this effort, and I urge you to pass it with no amendment. Thank you.
Floor.
Good evening, Mayor Dionne, members of the council. My name's Quincy Hensel. I am a resident of Portland, and I also serve as the president and CEO of the Portland Regional Chamber of Commerce. We represent more than 700 businesses and nonprofits in Portland, over 70% of which employ fewer than 15 people. I am here tonight on their behalf to oppose the proposal before you to raise Portland's minimum wage to $20 an hour. No one disputes that workers deserve wages that allow them to live with dignity. With a current minimum wage of $15.50, we are already higher than Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Vermont, Rhode Island, New York, and New Jersey, and our minimum wage is tied to inflation to ensure that it grows every year. That increase came from a citizen-led referendum in 2020, exactly the kind of democratic process this council has pledged to honor. This proposal before you tonight is different. It did not come from the people, but from the council itself, an unprecedented path for a referendum in recent years. Actually, when you debated this a year ago, you sent it to committee after hearing overwhelming opposition. This proposal remains essentially the same, and yet those concerns that were shared have only grown stronger. In the last year, I think we can all agree, the ground has shifted dramatically. With President Trump's election, small businesses and nonprofits are facing an unprecedented, unprecedented level of uncertainty. Tariffs seem to shift by the day, driving costs and disrupting supply chains. The so-called Big Beautiful Bill has slashed federal Medicaid funding, and federal funds are being pulled from a seemingly endless number of causes, dramatically impacting so many critical nonprofits in our community. In this current unpredictable environment, where there feels, there feels there is so little that we can control, a 30% jump in labor costs could be the breaking point, and that is something we can control. Any entity that relies on fixed reimbursements from the state, such as childcare, healthcare providers, and social service agencies, cannot raise prices to absorb this increase in cost. They will be forced to cut services, relocate, or close altogether, making care and support less accessible. Acting now, before the full impact of the Big Beautiful Bill is known, risks destabilizing the very safety net Portland families rely on. The chamber has been steadfast in our commitment to addressing the high cost of living in Portland, whether that be housing, or childcare, or transit. But this proposal at this moment is too much. Large national chains can absorb this cost, but the small businesses and nonprofits that are truly the backbone of our economy, that make Portland vibrant, and that provide jobs and economic stability so many depend on, they cannot absorb this cost. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
I'll go upstairs.
Hi, I'm Wade. I live at Leland Street. I'm going to focus on the amendment, so I'm, I'm super happy to see this, I hope it's brought to referendum, but I would like to encourage you to bring it without the, without the amendment. The intention is to help workers who are struggling to pay their bills, and the amendment suggests that somehow we should ask Portland whether workers employed at large firms should be paid a living wage, but not whether people working at smaller firms also deserve a living wage. I think, given the opportunity, Portland will vote for their neighbors to have a living wage, and I encourage you to put the question of whether all of them deserve a living wage. Thank you.
To the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Dionne and city councillors. My name is Ed Servone. I'm the VP of External Relations at the University of New England. We want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this proposal. University of New England directly employs around 1,400 people between Portland and Bedford. We provide education to over 11,000 undergraduate and graduate students annually. We are a big contributor to the economy. Our students and staff spend millions in the community and deliver thousands of hours of community service annually, mostly in the form of free or reduced-cost healthcare services to the people of this community. We estimate, we look at this in two senses, in terms of the business line. We estimate the proposed wage increase will cost us over a quarter of a million a year, and that doesn't take into effect any compression effect. That'll bring the price even higher. Where that's a concern is, as an education institution, a nonprofit service provider, we don't have the option to raise prices, nor do most of our nonprofit service provider colleagues in the community. In fact, we are all actively looking to lower the effective price of our services for the people who seek that because of the economy we're living in these days. But most importantly, and as you've heard before, is that someone representing a nonprofit higher education institution, I ask you to consider the ongoing actions of Congress and the White House right now. Simply stated, nonprofits and higher education institutions are getting hammered, and there's no relief in sight. Critical funds are being cut, payments are halted without warning, and this happens weekly. All of Maine's nonprofit community is hustling to make sure that we continue to deliver services, that we continue to meet the needs of community members, and most importantly, that we continue to protect the employment of our employees. Unfortunately, most of us will not be able to maintain that indefinitely as this continuous attack from the federal government comes. So as a member of the Portland community, we are sympathetic. No one likes being here arguing against wages for employees, but we are sympathetic to the rising cost of living. Our students and staff love Portland. They want to be here. For many, it's too expensive, and they have to live in a surrounding committee, community. A more effective piece would be to help them achieve some more affordable housing in terms of their financial stability. So please consider opposing this proposal as a council and not sending it to voters for this question. We want to, we want to remain as a community that will just divide us and further the agenda of Congress and the White House at this point in time. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
I'll go upstairs now.
My name is Lila. I live on University Street, and I've heard this issue discussed in committee and at the council a couple times now, and every time it comes up, we hear from a small number of business owners and the University of New England about how they don't want to pay their workers a living wage. And I'm sure that we can understand the pressure that they are feeling. I used to be the director of a nonprofit. It's hard to balance a budget. I can understand that pressure, but I think we need to be really clear that it is not the city council's job to look after the interests of a small number of business owners. It is the city council's job to look out for the whole city and especially the most vulnerable residents. And the fact is that there are thousands of workers in the city of Portland who stand to benefit and have their material lives improved with an increase in the minimum wage. I understand change is scary. There's a lot of crazy stuff happening in the government right now at the federal level. I'm sure that there was pushback when our country, you know, first implemented minimum wages at all, and I don't think that that fear and that fear mongering is being used in good faith. I think, like, it's, it's up to the council to send this to the voters. I think it'll pass. I think it's incredibly popular, but you all don't have to decide. You just have to let our democratic process take place and don't block this effort from going to the voters. I ask you to send this to the voters in November and to oppose amendments that cut out workers from being included in this based on the size of their workforce. I don't think it's a good idea to set up a tiered system where some employees, you know, make more than others, and I think the people of Portland can decide on this matter in November, and we just need you to not block that effort from taking place.
To the floor.
Members of the Portland City Council, thank you for the work you do and the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brian Batson. I'm here tonight on behalf of Maine Health. We're here tonight to ask the council reject the proposal and any amendments to increase Portland's minimum wage to one of the highest in the country. As many of you already know, Maine's safety net healthcare providers, including hospitals, are facing significant financial headwinds. Maine's hospitals operate- Maine's hospitals' operating margins are among the lowest in the country. We're experiencing additional financial challenges as we expect vulnerable patients to lose coverage in the coming months. In the copy I emailed to all of you, I've attached a new data set that reveals a grim financial outlook for Maine's hospitals, highlighting a mixture of increasing costs and reimbursement rates that aren't keeping up. The data shows that hospitals in Maine are among the most financially strained in the entire country, burdened by aging infrastructure, heavy debt, and slim to negative operating margins. Hospitals nationwide are bracing for impacts from the passage of H.R. 1, Big Beautiful Bill, the congressional budget reconciliation bill that passed. It's estimated that roughly 41,000 Mainers will lose healthcare coverage as a result of these policies. About 400,000 Maine residents, or about one in every four Mainers, are enrolled in Medicaid, and another 65,000 are enrolled in the state's marketplace. In addition, the bill is expected to cost Maine's Medicaid program over $3 billion over the next 10 years, and it shifts $60 million annually in SNAP benefits to the state. Maine's hospitals will see sicker patients who lack insurance and are struggling with food insecurity. And it comes at a time when Maine hospitals are already experiencing tremendous financial pressures. Citing financial pressures, again, this is the link I provided you, Northern Light Healthcare closed inland hospital in Waterville this year and announced additional changes in the press release on July 1st. Other hospitals have had to close or curtail services. Citing a lack of volume and financial issues, nine Maine hospitals have closed birthing centers in the past decade, including Holton Regional Hospital and Maine Health Waldo Hospital in Belfast this past year. At the same time, as part of our mission and vision, Maine Health Maine Medical Center offers a world-class care to everybody regardless of their ability to pay, and we provide free care of charge to all patients at or below 200% of the federal poverty level. Last year, we provided over $65 million in uncompensated care to our patients served by Maine Health Maine Medical Center. As councillors have mentioned in relation to this ordinance, housing values in Portland have risen. We see this directly through the challenges our own care team members have in finding safe and affordable homes. Housing costs in Portland and its surrounding areas represent a serious challenge for our workforce. Increase in the minimum wage will not solve the housing shortage. It will result in serious pain for Portland's employers. Maine Health is proud to have invested over $324 million in increased compensation for our non-executive, non-physician care team members over the last couple of years. And in doing so, we have stretched scarce resources to the limit. This proposal would add $23 million in additional cost to the Maine Health system. We, as a large employer with a workforce that spans Maine and New Hampshire, we're proud to provide equitable... Can I have 10 more seconds?
Time.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and we ask that you please reject this proposal. The entire testimony is in your email. Thank you.
Upstairs.
Do I introduce myself again?
Please, it'd be helpful.
This is Gibson Shields. I'm living in the West End in Portland. I think coming in support of decreasing minimum wage, I'm a child of business owners. I know the struggles and how hard it can be, but entry-level or not, if your business requires a job to operate, that worker needs to be able to live. And if that means that you have to lose some comforts in your life from what you gain from your business so your workers can have a livable wage, then that's the steps you need to take. If a job, a business, doesn't exist on its own, it doesn't exist on just the drive of someone who creates it or owns it, it solely operates on the people that can work for them. And if they can't live, then that, no job should exist if someone can't live from it. And that's all I have to say about that.
Floor.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tamara Gallagher. I own a childcare in Portland. We opened in 2020 during the pandemic to try to help parents that were struggling trying to find childcare. I have many staff that make above $20 an hour, and I have some staff that make below $20 an hour. We start at 17 typically, and that's for very entry-level, fresh out of high school and no experience. What's unique about child cares is that our tuition rates are largely dictated by subsidy rates and subsidy reimbursement from the state for parents that can't, already can't afford childcare. We're operating on extremely thin margins, and so I noticed that someone said earlier, "Just get rid of the comforts in your job." Well, that's not that simple for childcare owners that already don't make money or are on very thin margins. What this will mean is that somebody who is an entry-level position now has to make $20 an hour, so the person that was making $23 an hour, or 24, or 25 because of experience, now has to go up above 30, 35, 40. This will cripple the childcare industry. Why would you, as a parent, pay $50 more a week? Because I calculated it out, and it'll be an increase of $50 a week per child per week. That's a lot of money for a parent that already can't afford childcare. So why would you pay $50 more a week to go to a childcare in Portland when you can receive the same services in Westbrook, Falmouth, South Portland, lots of neighboring towns that are just a few minutes away, for $50 less a week? It just doesn't make sense. It's going up nearly 30% in a minimum wage will not help the childcare industry, which is already suffering in Portland. I fear that we've already had many child cares in Maine close. I understand about livable wages. I completely understand. I'm not saying that our teachers don't deserve $20 an hour, I really not, but what this will do is cut other services such as healthcare, or insurance, and other reimbursement, free childcare, that other services that we provide to our employees. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone upstairs wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor Dion, members of the council. My name is Nate Cludier. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of Hospitality Maine. We represent the state's interests in hospitality, including restaurants, inns, and the bars that help make Maine and Portland what they are. I think it's important to reflect on something as important and visionary as Portland's hospitality and tourism scene. That doesn't happen by accident. It took lifetimes of dedication and passion to bring Portland's hospitality and tourism community to what it is today. Predominantly, they're independent, locally-owned businesses. They're not boogeymen from away. These are your constituents and your neighbors. They want to pay fair competitive wages, retain good people, and treat their teams with respect because they all know how hard work hospitality is. I talk to restaurants and innkeepers every day, and they tell me, like, before I got here, I was like, "Are you going to be able to show up?" And there's two reasons that they aren't here this evening in such large numbers, as was pointed out earlier. One, today is August 25th, the height of Maine's tourism season. Two, regrettably, is fear of retaliation, which is something that's unfortunate that we live with today. I don't have to tell anybody here that walking around this town, you've already seen and heard from your constituents very sad stories about restaurants and other businesses that have closed over the last year, especially in the greater Portland area. That's been, it's been very tough. Labor costs are between 30 to 40% for businesses. Food costs are also right around that realm. It's very expensive to run a business, and it's not a luxury of absorbing more. Restaurants operate on 3% to 5% margins if they're lucky. Some of them net zero. They have to make it all during the summer season to then lose it for the other eight months of the year, kind of a bad joke in the hospitality industry. Anyway, I'll wrap up with saying that I'm usually have been in front of you as more, making more of an economic plea as to why you should have a certain perspective on an issue. This, to me, also has an emotional, cultural aspect to it. Small, independent businesses built Portland's reputation as a national foodie scene. Having the unintended consequences of something like this go into effect is going to erode at that, and I don't think that's anybody's intention here. These are, these are difficult questions that I agree shouldn't be decided at a ballot box. Policy committees have this within their purview because they need to dig deep and look at the full effects of it. So before I'm called out for time, I'll say thank you and appreciate your consideration of Maine's hospitality industry.
Good instinct. To the floor.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Dearborn, and I reside in Hollis. I am the Human Resources Director of Port Resources, a nonprofit social service organization supporting individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities as well as autism. We support individuals who live in group homes and apartments across many districts of Portland. I am here today to share my grave concerns about the devastating impact implementing a mandated $20 an hour minimum wage would have on our workforce and our very vulnerable clients. We support nine group homes and 12 independent living apartments in Portland. These Portland programs support 40 clients and employ nearly 70 team members. Our funding comes through State of Maine's Main Care Program. An hourly rate is set by the state which we receive for each hour of service we provide. The set rate is non-negotiable, and there is no mechanism to receive higher funds should higher expenses get passed on to us. These higher expenses become unfunded mandates and, over time, erode our ability to maintain a stable organization. The state's proposed biannual budget increase includes no increases to our rates. At our current rate, we just break even. The proposed change to go to $20 minimum wage would simply decimate us. Just for Portland-based workforce, this increase would cost us minimally an additional $350,000 annually. We have absolutely no way to absorb this. We absolutely want to pay our hard-working team members higher wages, but we can only achieve this by receiving higher rates. Given the threats to the Medicaid program on both state and federal levels, our chances of receiving higher rates are nearly nonexistent. Please consider that our compliance with this mandate could only be achieved if we receive enough, higher enough rates to support higher wages. If this wage increase is passed along to us before we have rates to support it, it would have a detrimental effect on those we support, forcing homes to close and/or relocate outside of Portland. This would have a disappropriate, negative impact on some Portland's, some of Portland's most vulnerable residents. Portland is such a wonderful place for our clients to live and our team members to work, but this change would make it untenable for our organization to sustain our services here. No one wants to move individuals we support who live, love living in this city. This is their home. This is their community. Please don't allow those we support to lose their ability to live in Portland. Thank you for your time and critical consideration of this issue.
Anyone upstairs wishing to comment? Seeing none, to the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and city councillors. My name is Mary Ellen Lindeman. I'm a, live at Richardson Street. I am here today as a Portland resident, mother of a recent Deering High School graduate. I am a small business owner. I own Coffee by Design, a business that was almost sold out of state, but I bought my business partner out because I felt local business matters, and the people who were going to buy us did not care about Portland. It was a return on investment. So I have risked my retirement. I am 65 years old. Portland is at a critical juncture. Your vote today will decide whether we move forward in a positive way. Some of you hopefully saw the letter I had published in the Portland Press Herald about the future of Portland is locally-owned small business. What was not included in the letter, which they edited, was the financial benefit that local businesses add to our economy. In a study by the Maine Center for Economic Policy focusing on the greater Portland area, the significant economic impact of locally-owned businesses was highlighted. The study found that every $100 spent at a local business contributes an additional $58 to local economy compared to just 33 for every $100 spent at a national chain. So what does this have to do with today's vote? The City of Portland Plan 2030 spoke of a vision to support local business retention and recruitment. The time to help us is now. Coffee by Design has been part of Portland since 1994. We have weathered economic downturns, invested in our team, supported local causes, built relationships with coffee farmers around the globe. We have worked hard to contribute to the vibrancy and success of the City of Portland. We and countless others are finding the cost and challenges of doing business in Portland harder to sustain. Three more businesses just announced closing this weekend alone. Empty storefronts can't pay any wages, and we know from the city's past, big out-of-state businesses come when they see opportunity and leave without a thought when the numbers just don't add up. I ask that you focus on affordable housing. Leave the step-up plan for minimum wage, which was approved in 2020 as-is. My team already make at least $20 an hour, but we have a rich benefits package, including an EAP plan, which I pay for in full to ensure mental health wellness has no barriers. We're already holding on to what we have, but rising costs due to tariffs, business and property taxes, and climate issues are stretching us to the limit. Give us the level playing field we deserve and need so that our beloved team members and the local, and in our case, global, community have a future. I hope you will work towards the goals outlined in Plan 2030, enabling us to thrive, not merely survive, and may Portland the great work-lived city it can be. Thank you.
Anyone upstairs? To the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Todd Creash, and I live at 1917 Washington Avenue. I just wanted to say a couple names. Dr. Andrew Muller, that's the first name I wanted to say. The second name is, here it is, James Herbert. James Herbert is the president of University of New England. He makes $750,000 a year. The representative from UNE said that the increase in the minimum wage would cost them $300,000, about a third of the president's salary for UNE. That's just a fact. And then the president, the CEO, sorry, Dr. Andrew Muller of Maine Health makes $1.7 million a year. So in terms of how to absorb costs, you know, some people can absorb costs and other people can't. I think it's quite cynical that the big businesses and the big nonprofits are trying to turn what I was just, Mary Ellen, right, was speaking about, about being a small business owner and getting caught between the vice of these impending cuts from the Trump administration, the impact on, on city budgets, municipal budgets, and the need to, to provide people with a living wage. It's tough. It's a, it's a very difficult position for some of those small businesses. Some of those small businesses are a lot more profitable than others. But I'll just say, when things are tough, sometimes the council has to make a difficult decision. I work for the Portland Public Schools with a lot of, I work in the Multilingual Center. When you talk about who's making minimum wage in this city, a lot of those quote-unquote "entry-level" jobs are kids who are working full-time to try to keep their parents and their family in an apartment. I've spent the last few months scouting apartments in Portland for families, $2,500 bucks for a crappy two-bedroom plus utilities, if you're lucky, which means at $15 an hour, that means almost two full-time people giving 80% of their minimum wage jobs to just stay in an apartment. So that's the reality. When people talk about entry-level jobs, there are some kids who go out and get an entry-level job. We might imagine who they are, and they're just getting pocket money or something like that. That exists. That's a real thing. But a lot of the people who are working for minimum wage now, they're, if they're entry-level jobs, it's because that's where they're stuck, because of language barriers, because of race, because of class. And so I think that the council has to make a difficult decision to say, and with all due respect, Councilman Ali, I think the 50-employee exemption undercuts the, the minimum wage too much, and so that, I would urge you to reject that, again, with all due respect. But I think we have to make a decision where to start, and I think the council should start at raising the minimum wage to $20 an hour with no exemption, and then figure out through social housing, through other tax measures that can be taken at the state level, through banding together to fight the Trump administration's budget cuts, how we can extend that hand to the small businesses, as Mary Ellen and other people are, who are doing their best. Thank you.
Anyone above? To the floor. We don't, we don't do hands. You get in line if you...
I get in line, I'm not gonna be able to speak.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Speaker.
Good evening. My name is Tony Iris. I am the president of Still a Good Car Thrift Shop. We're up by the Paul and Sage Company. We've operated, it's a nonprofit. We raise money to give money to the McCauley House. We've operated in Portland for over 30 years. We supply high-quality used goods to people, and all of our employees are paid minimum wage. We have many, many volunteers as well. While we love to pay them more, they understand that by keeping the wages at minimum wage, we're able to make a donation to the, to McCauley House because we, last year, we didn't have enough money to make any type of a donation to McCauley House because we had a tough year. Expenses were up, our leases gone up, and I think that's a situation that a lot of small businesses and small profits are looking at. If minimum wage goes up, we're probably looking at thousands of extra dollars in costs for our, for our shop. If it goes up to $20 an hour, we're probably not going to be able to function, and we're going to do what many companies are going to do. We're going to move out of Portland, and I think that's one thing that you don't want to see, is a lot of nonprofits moving out of Portland. I think it's a choice that a lot of people are going to have. Minimum wage, to me, should be set at the state level, not at the local level. Some states, like Massachusetts, actually have laws preventing towns from setting minimum wage laws in order to have stability, so that one town won't have one minimum wage, another town will have a lower minimum wage, and, and, and companies won't move back and forth. So I, I think it's more of a state item rather than a local item. And another point, despite what you may have heard, I, I think minimum wage is exactly that. It's a bare minimum. It's not intended to be, not intended to be a living wage. Even at twenty dollars an hour, no one can live in Portland at twenty dollars an hour. My daughter made twenty dollars an hour and she couldn't live in South Portland. She's now living with us. So at, as we heard, I think twenty-five dollars an hour is probably the minimum you need to make in Portland. This is not going to help those people. While I think the proposal is well-intended, I think it's going to have unintended consequences. It's going to cause a lot of nonprofits to kind of go under oar, to move out of the town and to move to adjacent towns, like we may, we may well do. It'll all, it'll also cause a lot of the leases to be, a lot of the storefronts to have for lease signs as we see up and down Free Street. So I don't, I don't think it's a well, although I think it's well-intended, I don't think it'll have the consequences that people want, and I think for those reasons, I would suggest that you oppose it or that you limit it in such a way that it doesn't affect businesses or companies with so many people, maybe under fifty people. Thank you.
Floor.
Thank you, City Council. I'm Todd Morse. I live at Tenhamon Street, and I'm here today to speak in support of increasing the minimum wage. In twenty-twenty, we passed a pretty high minimum wage, and if we pass this, we're on track to more or less keep pace with inflation by the time it goes to full effect. So I think that this is kind of the condition we're already under, and a lot of people have mentioned increasing costs and things like the big beautiful bill and tariffs, and these are actually expected to be even more inflationary. So we could be looking at, we saw unprecedented inflation because of COVID and now because of our votes, we're going to see a lot of inflation for pretty much no reason. But I think those costs are going to be borne by businesses, and you've heard a lot about that, and it's bad, but also we have to think about who is going to shoulder those costs. Inflation isn't a real thing. It's not that money kind of goes up in value like a number, it's that a basket of goods costs a different amount, housing costs a different amount, groceries cost a different amount. So if we allow wages to stagnate while inflation continues to go up, we're basically seeing the minimum wage that we voted on cut in real terms by economic conditions, even though that's not exactly what we voted on. The other thing I wanted to mention is, minimum wage has this effect where giving more money to people who are lower income means that they're going to spend more of it, because people who are lower income spend a greater proportion of their money into the local economy. That also causes a little bit of economic stimulus. There is probably going to be a little bit of a contraction in, in jobs, but that stimulus effect can also counteract that, so it's not quite as straightforward as it might seem. The last thing I was going to say is, there's been some concern about deciding the wage by referendum, and I, I think that that concern is valid, but this actually has gone through committee, and the reason it's going back before the voters is kind of procedural because it already had been that way. So if we can't change it by referendum, you know, we kind of can't change it at all. This did go through committee and was carefully considered, so I would like to see this go forward to the ballot. Thank you.
Anyone upstairs? Seeing none, I'll go to the floor.
Honorable council members and mayor, my name is Orion Marine. I've worked with a number of Portland nonprofits and had the opportunity to look at a lot of data and hear a lot of stories from those who are financially insecure and also from those who are trying to help those individuals and families. I'd just like to encourage you to collaborate with service providers and employers to address their concerns regarding the minimum wage. Unfortunately, in the current system, we have the benefits cliff, and sometimes more is actually less. A child with parents who makes twenty dollars an hour no longer qualifies for main care or heating assistance or SNAP. Even a family of four loses heating assistance, and a family of five or less, fewer members, loses SNAP if the parents make twenty dollars an hour. At the current minimum wage, a pregnant individual qualifies for main care, but not at seventeen dollars an hour, and things are even more uncertain with the work requirements that Congress just passed. Obviously, the system needs to work better, and we need strong leadership on the local level and at all levels, but leadership is not going alone. Leadership is collaboration. As you know, nonprofit social services providers rely on state subsidies and reimbursement rates and are put in a bind when Portland acts alone without collaborating on improving state policies. I encourage you to collaborate with service providers and employers so we can address the needs of our vulnerable neighbors more effectively. Thank you.
To the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Dion, members of the City Council. I'm Richard Pfeffer. I've been running Maine's Original Group Hub in the Old Port since nineteen eighty-eight. I've been in front of the council many, many times, though not recently, and that's been by choice. I'm glad to be here tonight to talk about this. I, I think that the minimum wage had been voted on and the referendum to tie it to inflation has kind of answered this, and I think that this is an unnecessary exercise. I want to suggest that inflation is caused by higher labor, and a raise in the minimum wage is inflationary, and inflation is probably the most regressive tax that we have in this country. And when you, when you require me to pay twenty dollars an hour, you just have to ask yourself, what do you want to pay for a cheeseburger? Because that's what it's going to cost. And every time you, you raise the, the minimum wage, you raise all of the prices. That is inflation, and it gets passed right on to our customers. Our customers right now are suffering from hundred-and-fifty-dollar grocery bags, and they can't afford their, their much-increased electric bills and their hundred-and-fifty-dollar grocery bags, so they don't come out as often as they did. They come out once a week or once a month compared to three or four times a week or five times a month. It's just, everybody has to cut back because our government, state, local, federal, has incre, has created a massive amount of inflation over the past five years that has created a real problem for the restaurant industry. We need you to consider that, and I would also suggest that having this go to a referendum instead of having it be on, on your responsibility, I, I would suggest that the City Council should be courageous enough to make this decision as elected officials. You've already been given the responsibility to make the decisions, not to put it back on the voters. I would suggest that that's probably the most important piece of this, other than running local businesses out of town. Thank you.
Seeing no one upstairs, to the floor.
Didn't know if I could see over there. I have a hard time calling you mayor because you were my sheriff for eight years, so I'll try not to call you sheriff. I'm here representing the Italian Heritage Center. We're a business.
You got to tell them your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They, they don't know you.
My name is Nicola Cox. I'm here representing the Italian Heritage Center. I'm the president of this Italian Heritage Center. We have business and we have the members of it. Our business is who we employ. Our employees work at, on a merit scale. They start off at seventeen dollars and they work those way up. So we've had, we've got people in there now that make twenty dollars an hour. So we have, that makes them work a little harder, and it's becoming very hard for us too. I mean, we're a business also, and when the economy goes down, we have food costs, we have everything all the restaurants have. So raising it to twenty dollars an hour, I think people should have a merit system. If they want to make more money, they have to do a good job. And I'm encouraging you not to vote for this.
I'll stay on the floor. There's no one upstairs.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Cleary. We are a small, private company that operates the Planet Fitness On Marginal Way as a franchisee. I'm strongly opposed to the proposal for at least the following reasons. The proposal is a very large increase in both dollar and percentage, and increases of this magnitude quickly make businesses unsustainable. Please consider that this extraordinary increase not only affects wages at the lower end of the scale, but will have a ripple effect through the entire payroll structure, much like others have already noted. Raising the lower end of the wage so dramatically will hamper our ability to reward great employees with raises and make it harder to differentiate pay for skill and high performance. While I'm sure that those in favor are well-intentioned, it's my opinion that such large increases will produce unintended consequences. I think of the economics of a business as a system of gears that needs to work together. Revenue, rent, utilities, wages, and more are the gears that need to work together. What we saw during the pandemic and during the repercussions thereafter was the gears weren't working together, and that's what caused the hemorrhage. When one of the gears expands too rapidly, the remaining gears don't work together anymore, and business models are disrupted and can fail. When businesses have choices about where to build their businesses, they look closely at these economics. If someone can open a store in South Portland, a city that does not impose these artificial supports, why would they come to Portland? The seeds that you plant today are either going to attract businesses or not. I would suggest that the city needs all the business investment that you can muster. On the fairness quotient, let me ask you this question. If a utility showed up in here and proposed a thirty percent increase to the level that produced the highest power rate in the country, what would be your response? Why are we not thinking about this same percentage increase in the same way? We know that our social services will be negatively impacted, driving essential businesses and social service organizations out of Portland. We know that such a dramatic increase in minimum wages will exacerbate our already-high-cost of living, creating a vicious cycle. The constant review of such a dramatic increase proposes, produces economic uncertainty. No business contemplating a store in Portland thinks that uncertainty is an attraction. I would urge you to take a reasonable approach to this issue and reject this increase in minimum wage. Thank you.
Still on the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Dion, Eamon Dundan from the Portland Regional Chamber. I am here to read some testimony from one of our most outstanding members, Camelia Babsen-Haley from Youth and Family Outreach, who had to leave when the agenda was rearranged. My name is Camelia Babsen-Haley, and I serve as the Executive Director of Youth and Family Outreach in Portland. I'm also a resident of District Five. I'm here to share a perspective on the proposal to raise Portland's minimum wage to twenty dollars by twenty-twenty-nine and specifically what this means for childcare. First, let me be clear. Childcare workers deserve to earn a living wage. They're entrusted with the care and education of our youngest children during the most critical years of development. They should not be living paycheck to paycheck while doing work of such importance. The challenge is this: unlike many other sectors, childcare does not have a way to absorb the higher costs of wages. We are not making a profit. We are not selling a product where we can adjust prices strategically. Nearly every additional dollar we pay in wages must come directly from the tuition paid by families, and the families we serve are already stretched to the limit. What this means is that an increase in the minimum wage, while right and fair, ultimately gets passed on to parents, and those parents are the workforce that Portland businesses depend on every day. When childcare becomes unaffordable, families are forced to reduce their hours, leaving the workforce altogether or making unsafe arrangements for their children. That hurts not only individual families, but the entire local economy. So yes, we must raise wages, but we cannot do it in isolation. Childcare is a public good, not a private luxury. If we truly want a strong workforce, a vibrant city, and thriving children, we must invest public dollars in childcare, just as we do in K-12 education. This is the systemic change that's needed. I urge you to see this proposal not as the end of a conversation, but as the beginning. Raising the minimum wage is important, but if Portland wants families to stay, to work, and to grow here, then we must pair wage increases with policies and funding that make childcare affordable and sustainable. Thank you for your time and for considering not just the immediate impact of this policy, but also the broader systems that the working families depend on. Thank you.
Floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Grayson Lookner. I am a resident in Portland on Woodvale Street. I'm also a state representative, here to speak in opposition to the amendment and in support of the initiative to send this to voters. To offer a historic perspective, in two thousand and eleven, the City of Portland, I believe it was, raised the minimum wage to ten bucks an hour when the rest of the state was eight dollars an hour. Did this city hemorrhage workers? Did it hemorrhage businesses? I don't think so. The twenty-teens were among the era that this city grew fastest and had some of the most vibrant growth, so I think a lot of these arguments that we hear don't necessarily take that into account. I also hear folks who are working in nonprofits and especially in childcare, and that is a, I, I, I believe childcare is a human right and that it should be on the state to subsidize those systems, and I've been working very hard, and a lot, a lot of you know the dynamics in Augusta, where it, it's really tough to get through things that, that would make it easier for us to raise the revenue so that we can subsidize those services. And a lot of those efforts are frankly opposed by many of the interests and lobbies that you here speak to you today in opposition to this effort. So I would just encourage you all to, and, and I will be working on this at the state level because it should be a state issue, and we need to do a better job at all levels of government to support working people. So that's my promise to you. It's not a stump speech, and I just want to point that out, that historically, increasing the minimum wage in Portland has not led to hemorrhaging workers and hemorrhaging businesses, and it's been good for a lot of different, or, or, it's been good for our local economy. So let's get to work subsidizing childcare and subsidizing a lot of the nonprofits that provide vital services that we all rely on, and let's make sure that their workers can afford to live in our great city. Thank you.
Anyone upstairs wishing to speak? Seeing none, go on to the floor.
Hi there, I'm David Turn. I'm the chef and owner of David's Restaurant. I think many of you know me. To be honest, I'm very rarely at a loss for words, and I have to say, I've written my comments and rewritten my comments and rewritten my comments, and I'll just try and sum it up. We all want workers to be able to afford to live in Portland. We all want our workers to make more money. There's no question that everybody in this room wants that, myself included. Unfortunately, the reality is that every other municipality in the country that has raised their minimum wage to a high level has seen an increase in homelessness, and they've seen a big loss in employment for people who are most vulnerable. I'm really afraid that if we go down this path, we can't turn it around, and we will in fact harm the very people that we want to help. It's not what we want, but that's what's happened in every other community, every other municipality that's done this. I can't think of a reason why Portland would be any different. I urge you to not send this to the voters. Please don't do it. The system we have, I think, is tied to inflation. It's a good plan. It's predictable, and I think you should leave it alone. Just don't do it, please. Thank you very much for listening.
Steven Schaffer, Brackett Street. I first want to note that tonight you had three former city councilors here speaking to different items. Not usual that you get that many former city councilors joining you at your meetings. There are two amendments in the package, and now that everybody's spoken, I'm going to point out that there are two amendments in the package that you did not tell the public about and were not presented before the public comment. You were going to respond to it.
No, nothing.
Okay. So, and some people talked about one of them. I don't really understand the other one. So it didn't make much sense to me, so. The city finance director provided you with a memo. He provided you with actually three different versions of a memo, which over time has changed or reflect additional information, et cetera. Originally, his fiscal note was for $3 million per year and change. And I sent him a note and pointed out to him that it's actually $3 million the first year, $6 million the second year, $9 million the following year, and he now goes out to four years and shows you an $11 million fiscal note. That's just on the city budget. This is going to affect the city budget next year for $3 million, the following year for $6 million, and so forth. That alone should be a reason for you to not even think about sending this out to vote. This is a drain, not on the nonprofits that talk to you, on the businesses that talk to you, but it's a drain on the city budget itself. And I want to encourage you to kill this tonight. The only other thing I, oh, I wanted to point out, I'm sorry, is that even if we don't pass this, if you don't send this out to voters tonight, the minimum wage is going to go up in the next four years, is going to go up to $17 and change anyways, just based on the CPI formula that's built into it. So it's going to go up, it's like 50 cents a year, pretty much, the calculation I came up with. It's 50 cents a year. That'll go up between now and then. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on these pending orders? Public comment period is closed. All right, then. First order of business is Chair would seek a motion and a second to pass as an emergency. Moved by Counselor Ali, seconded by Counselor Sykes. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Counsel comment? None. All right, take a vote. All those. You want me to do my amendments? All right, then. So we're going to have to go to the Counselor Phillips amendment. There's got to be some whispering going on here. The chair is going to go to... We'll go to Amendment One, Counselor Ali.
I thank you, Mayo. I brought forward this, oh, before then, I want to thank everybody who emailed me. The emails are very interesting. It goes like Counselor Ali, please don't support Counselor Ali's amendment. And because he worked with the chamber to bring forward that amendment. And in my attempt to explain that, I did that on my own. I didn't collaborate with the chamber. After responding to two people, I decided not to respond. So if I didn't respond to you, I wasn't ignoring your email. It's because I don't want to debate via email. Why did I brought the amendment forward?
Counselor Ali, before you get to that part, I was just calling on you because I assumed you wanted to make the motion for passage on your own amendment.
Yeah, let me speak, and then I'll make the motion. Okay, I'm making the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead now.
Right. So after, how do we call it, these have passed from my committee. Thank you to committee members for moving it forward. I think all of us voted in favor of it. I did, had meeting with some business owners and nonprofit owners. Some of the nonprofit owners, actually, they are starting, not all of them, but some of them, they are starting rate for new employees is up to $25, some of them. And also, I met with people who have small businesses, and they explained to me how this is going to impact their businesses here in Portland if we do that. So I know it is, it was anecdota. I didn't do any research to see the compelling why it is 500 employees, but I believe that there are some businesses in Portland who will be able to absorb the impact of this increase from that level. So, which is why I made the amendment, and I will repeat, I didn't collaborate with the chamber. I did it on my own, and I hope that my colleagues will support this tonight.
Just for the record, it's 50, not 500.
Yeah, 50, yeah.
Okay. You and I are suffering from the same virus, I see.
I know, Mayo.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Phillips. Counsel Palatier. Yeah, no, go ahead, Palatier.
This amendment would be humiliating to put to the public. It's, it would cut out so many, so many workers. It would cut out workers that are cleaners, that are, you know, I have a super in my previous building who is basically, she cannot move because she is paid the minimum wage, and if she quits that job, then she'll get evicted. Her husband has heart disease. They are not a 50-person company. This should have been discussed and disposed of in committee, and I will not be supporting this.
Counselor Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate my colleagues' desire to collaborate and come to a decision that works for many different sides of this issue. I don't think this is the answer. There's an amendment that will come later that I think is a little bit better tuned to this. The reason that I will be voting against this tonight is that I think it's incredibly damaging to create two classes of workers. I want to speak directly to the workers in the audience. Your labor is yours. You own it, the same way that you own your bicycle, your car, your home, whatever it is, right? You own your labor. And so if you look around at the business owners that come to testify on issues like this, you see how organized they are to protect what they own. Workers need to begin to think that way and to become organized the way that capital is organized. We have to start doing this in a way that is organized from the workers' standpoint. We cannot continue to regulate this from here, from the council. And the reason that we're putting, the reason that I put this forward is so we could get it on track to actually be reasonable to advance with the Consumer Price Index with inflation over time. It currently does not do that. It's not reasonable, so we have to push it along a little bit. But this amendment will not do that, will not do any of those things, and it only further disrupts the organization that workers have, the very fragile organization that workers have as a class. So I do not support undermining the cohesion of workers' solidarity by creating two classes. So I will be voting against this today, and I urge all workers to begin to organize in a really strong way because we cannot continue to do this from here.
Anyone else? Counselor Ali, I'm going to oppose your amendment for none of the reasons that I've heard so far, simply as a matter of principle that I'll address in the main amendment. But suffice to say, a two-tier approach seems like you have compassion for a certain class of workers, and that's admirable because they're in a bad situation, which the state should fix. But I'm going to vote against it tonight, all right? So just so you understand. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayo. That's okay. It's your vote. I was going to say that the argument that it will create two tier of employees, I think should not stop people from voting for this because we have multiple tiers of people who work in this city, even if we increase this minimum wage to $20. You, it's a capitalist society. We have, we live in a capitalist society. It doesn't matter how much you raise the minimum wage, you are still going to have different tiers of workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, then. On the Ali amendment, all those in favor, please signify by hand. Fails. That's all I'll say, Counselor. Failed. All right, now I'll go to the Phillips and Sykes amendment. But we go, Counselor Phillips, you had a late entry for an amendment today, am I correct? Amending the amendment.
Amending the amendment or amending the?
The order.
The order.
Yes. Go ahead. Can you tell us about your amendment?
Sure, absolutely. So like Counselor Ali, I also got flooded with folks asking me to vote against my cosponsoring of this bill. And I was able to talk to some. I was not able to talk to others. But I always welcome the conversation. This is a difficult, this is a difficult issue. Nobody can, nobody can say that it isn't. On the one hand, we have folks who can't afford to live in housing. That's, everybody agrees on that. We have folks who cannot afford to live in Portland. It doesn't matter how many affordable housing units that we build, right? I was able to go to the 45 Thordie Street opening the other day, and I saw these beautiful apartments, right? And so, and those are affordable housing. Not everybody's going to be lucky enough to get an affordable housing unit. So I get back to the gentleman who came earlier and said, what about those people who are paying $2,500 a month for rent for a two-bedroom plus utility? What do we do about those folks? I think the city is doing a really good job of building affordable housing units. I sit on Housing and Economic Development. I know what's in the pipeline for affordable housing units. That doesn't necessarily fix the problem. I can't talk about, you know, this research versus that research because on every issue, there's research that says it works, there's research that doesn't say it works, right? The other thing is, is that there's a lot of unknowns here, right? And so some folks mentioned that the state should take this on. The state should take it on, right? There is no, you cannot pay me enough money to go and be in the legislature. Plus, I already have somebody who's representing my family in that situation. And so, yeah, the state should take this on. Are they? I have no idea. If they do, is it going to work? I don't know. I don't, I don't necessarily know if I put that much trust into the state. I think they should, and that's up to them. Do we know what's going to happen with this big, beautiful bill? We know some things. We don't know others. There are some things that we don't know, and there are some things that we cannot predict, right? Will this affect small business? I hope not. I really don't. There was a woman here who did childcare. I, yes, thank you. And so I hope this doesn't affect your business. We want you to be in Portland. We want all small businesses to be in Portland. And so, and so we have with this, if we pass this and send it to the voters, it's better than a citizen's, because we can change it because of those unknowns, right? But the fact of the matter remains at this point in time, people cannot afford to live in Portland. They just can't. So sorry, I'm going round and round, but I'm getting there. You want me to do an amendment?
No, I just want you to pause for a minute.
Yes.
We can get legal clarification.
Okay.
If this passes, when we send it to referendum, turns out to be a disaster 18 months out for any number of reasons, Corporation Council, can we do anything about it at that juncture?
Yes. There's language in the order that carves out an exception to that five-year rule that we talked about earlier. So yes, the council will be able to amend this.
After how long?
During, I mean, once it becomes effective. If you look at the language in, bear with me one second. It's in the second paragraph of the main order, not in the amendment. It says, "Be it further ordered notwithstanding limitation on repeal or amendment of ordinances set forth in Portland City Code, Chapter Nine, Section 946, the City Council may, without a vote of the people, amend or repeal the ordinance set forth below at any time."
Go ahead and continue.
Yeah, thank you. And so, anyway, I will get to why I made this amendment. The reason why I made this amendment, and so what this amendment is, is that it slows this pace down. I just want the folks, because, believe you me, I talked to a lot of people this weekend about this. And so I just want the business community, the nonprofit folks, and anybody else who came. I just want you to know, I heard what you said. I put this amendment forward this morning because I did talk to a bunch of people this morning. I do want this to work. I do see both sides. People have to live in Portland. You want your businesses. So I did put forth this amendment, and it basically just slows it down a little bit. And we don't get to $20 an hour. We get to $19 an hour. And so hopefully you can see this in your backup material. I'm looking at it now. I do think this is fair. We've got to do something. We have to do something for the renters. And so again, I tried to listen to what you said to me. This is not perfect. It's not perfect. This can never be perfect because we have two sides of the coin. I'm just saying that this is what I'm putting forward. I don't know if I need to spell it out or not, but this is what I'm putting forward. I appreciate Counselor Sykes working with me on this, to co-sponsor it, and I hope the council will take a look at it and pass it.
Chair will now take a motion now that she's explained her amendment. Moved by Counselor Ali. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Phillips. Discussion of the amendment. Counselor Sykes.
Thank you. As a co-sponsor of this amendment, I just want to say a couple of things about it. We did work with the chamber to do this amendment, so, so there. I think that it is important to understand that we have an ecosystem here that we have to work within. And what we're looking at with this amendment is getting the minimum wage to what is considered an economic sweet spot, which is 60% of the median wage. It's not a living wage. It is 60% of the median wage of what workers earn in Portland. That's not a lot, right? That's, that's not a living wage. But it's a minimum wage, and that's the, that 60% sweet spot is where economists agree that there are no detrimental effects to the business economy, that it helps workers, but it doesn't do reprehensible things or catastrophic things to the business community. So we wanted to get it to that sweet spot. And so the adjustments that have been made here, what it does is it brings it, so in 2026, it brings it up to 1675, so that's less than what it was in the original order. In 27, it brings it to 1775, 28 to 19. And once we get to 19, we're right at that 60%. So after that, it begins to index with the Consumer Price Index with inflation, and that should keep it right at 60%. So that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do here, is to work with a principled concept of how we can do this as a community without helping workers, without damaging nonprofits and businesses. So I feel good about this. I think it's a compromise that I can live with. I think it still preserves the integrity of the original ordinance. It will help a lot of workers, and they need help, so, yeah.
Just for clarification, I missed it. Did you say you worked with the chamber on this?
Not directly, but...
Well, you didn't. Is it yes or no? I just...
We're working. We're working. Basically, we're trying to... Basically, we're trying to work with the chamber's demands on this, yes.
All right then. Any other comments from the council on this amendment? Counselor Fournier.
Just a procedure comment. I do know that we ask everyone to keep your reactions neutral. I know there are frustrating things that you will hear us say, but I think that needs to be the same on all sides, and we need to hold that same precedent for everybody.
So noted. Counselor Ali.
If this amendment passes, are we going to vote again, or we voted on amendment and that is it?
I couldn't hear the other part of your...
If this amendment passes, does it go to the, or are we going to vote again?
We're going to vote again on the main.
Main, listen.
Main, I'll call it the main motion as amended, which is, this is the question before us right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments on the amendment? All those in favor, please signify by hand. One, two. Is your hand up? Counselor Pelletier, no, okay. 6-3. All right, we have consensus at the main table here. We'll now be going for discussion.
And then I also, I just want to add, for the purposes of the emergency passage, just a note for this, if it doesn't pass as an emergency, it's still going to go, no matter what, on the ballot. The reason for the emergency passage is so ballots could be ordered this week because this was postponed from last meeting, it delayed, it would delay this by 10 days because orders don't take effect until 10 days after they're passed. So that's the only reason for the emergency passage, it's still going to go no matter what, we just get put on the lower end of printing is all. Yes, it'll be here in time still, it's just, we're the largest municipality in the state, we like to order our stuff first, so we get it, and we can do testing, so.
We've had discussions about that this week, that's why we want to be clear. All right, now we have the main motion on the floor as amended, discussion. Counselor Pelletier.
Main's, or Portland's renters are, half of Portland's renters are, it's called wage burdened, or rent burdened, which means that they are paying over 30% of their wages towards rent a month, and half of those are paying half of their wages into rent every month. Obviously, I think that we need to deal with affordable housing, we're doing so, but wages are part of that, and it's integral that we address that. Also, something that seems to have confused some folks, the reason this is a referendum is because voters passed this in 2020. They passed the last one, we're still in the period where we can't make changes. During that period, the chamber was very against it, and we hear now that it is a beautiful thing that was brought up from the people. So it's widely recognized, this is extremely popular, this will pass. If we don't pass it tonight, the unintended consequence of doing so is that we are going to lock in a higher minimum wage, probably next voting cycle. It will be a high turnout election, and a referendum that raises the minimum wage will pass, and it will likely not have the input that it has tonight. So I urge council tonight to pass this because it shows the workers that they can trust us, that they do not need to govern on our behalf, and that we can do so in a reasoned way. It just is, it is as simple as that, we're going to get a raised minimum wage either way. Do you want it in this method, or do we want it in a more extreme method? I'm personally happier with this method.
Any other comments? Counselor Ali was first.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to borrow from my colleague here's book, I am also going to speak to Portland's workers. In 2020, not only did I advocate it for minimum wage right here in this chamber, I canvassed for it and made sure that it passed. This year, it is different because the situation that we have on the ground is completely different from 2020. A lot of people have spoken about tariffs that is coming from the federal government and also nonprofit. I work in the nonprofit industry. I have seen how organizations and programs that we as a city argue them to do more are losing their funds. And they are cutting down on the services that they provide to the people who need. Some of them are even asked to sign some of the things that we were supposed to have signed a few days ago so that they can give, they can provide services, get the money that they need to provide services to their clients. And if we pass these based on my conversation with them, and they don't have funding to do the work that we, they are doing in our city, it's going to impact us way more than we anticipated if the minimum wage, if this goes through. So I hope that you will think about that tonight and vote against these proposals, not because we don't care about the workers in Portland, but because of the unintended consequences that will happen if this is moved forward. As others have said, there's a lot of uncertainties with the tariffs that is coming from the federal government, and also the federal government is cutting a lot of funding that goes to nonprofits in our communities. Some of us here do work in the nonprofit industry and can attest to that. I have been in several meetings, both here locally and at federal level, at national level, where foundations, private foundations, are trying to figure out, how are they going to give money to nonprofits across the country so that they can do the work that they are doing because the federal government is withdrawing its funding? I understand that workers are hurting, but we may end up hurting them more if we pass these because the federal money is going to come to the nonprofits that are doing a lot of services here in this city. Thank you.
Counselor Fournier.
Thank you. Wow, okay. I had to write down a lot of thoughts because this is, for me, it's really hard because I'm in multiple spaces, right? I work for a national nonprofit that supports Native American communities all over the country, and if there is one population that has been significantly impacted by this new administration, it is that population. And they rely on Indian health services, they rely on nonprofits and social services, they rely on public housing and social housing, and that's all been really, really impacted. And so I absolutely hear that, and as my colleague mentioned, this is a whole ecosystem, it's not just a single thing, it's multiple things relying on each other to work. What it feels like, though, unfortunately, in this current environment, is like a really elaborate game of chicken to see who's going to blink first, and who's going to make that first move, whether it's the housing sector, or wages are going up, or costs are coming down, or landlords for commercial properties start lowering their rents so that businesses actually don't get priced out of Portland and they can keep up with wages increasing. So I'm trying to balance all of those things, but I do think when we talk about, you know, the federal minimum wage, the state minimum wage, not all communities in Maine are the same. Portland is a significant outlier when we look at the whole state landscape. We have the largest economy, we have the most people, we have the most social services, and so we have a lot of competing needs. So it would make more sense to me that our minimum wage would naturally be higher than the rest of the state because of everything that we have in the city. And so I have to think about that. I do hear the significant concerns with organizations that rely on those fixed reimbursement rates. I worked for child development services, I worked for special ed preschools, so I know what you get for main care reimbursement is not enough to keep up with your labor costs, to keep up with your facility costs, to keep up with the care for all of the children that are getting supported. But that is a state fight, and I know, I had talked with some of our state representatives earlier today, there are some different bills that are in Augusta that are sitting on the governor's desk, waiting to be moved forward or funded to be able to support increasing those reimbursement rates, whether it's for main care, whether it's for healthcare, whether it's for childcare. Again, this is a systemic ecosystem solution that needs to happen, and it can't just be one thing. I think the other thing is, you know, voters enacted this to start, and so our only path to make any adjustments, which I feel like we talk about process and process and process, so our colleagues in committee brought this up through the process that is available to us, had a discussion, reviewed all the information available, and now brought that forward to us. And I feel like then it is incumbent on me to honor my colleagues' work to move that forward to the voters as we're able to. But I do want to underscore, by forwarding this to the voters, I think we need a very robust communication strategy to everyone in Maine. It can't just be one arm of this. We need affordable housing, we need wages to keep up with the cost of living, we need rents to come down, we need commercial rents to come down, we need to make this a place where people are able to do business. But I don't think we do that by putting all of this on the back of our workers and saying you don't get or deserve to make a livable wage. And this is not yet a livable wage, but it moves the needle up, I think, for everyone. And so that's why I'll be supporting moving this forward this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Bullitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to my colleagues who have said a lot of really articulate things tonight, thanks for the engagement from the public. I'll be fairly brief, I think it's important to really emphasize that we're all experiencing the storm of late-stage capitalism. We're all living it, and we do not all have the same boat, and some of us don't have a boat at all. Change has to start somewhere, and my sincere hope is that Portland will be seen as a leader in that change. I think we are on so many other issues, and I think that's true here as well. Other municipalities in the state will have to follow suit, they just will have to, like they have with so many other things. I work at a large nonprofit, so I'm not making this decision lightly. I myself manage a very limited budget within which I have to make very hard decisions every single day, and even more so given all that's happening with federal funding. The compression, the benefit cliff, main care reimbursement, and childcare subsidy are all very real, and so I don't want to not note those. But what I do want to say is they're not reasons to not move forward, and I urge everyone to take this advocacy, take this energy, and don't stop, let's bring that to the state, and continue to make Portland great and to make the whole state great. I like to think about this as my underlying, so obviously I'm supporting this, but one thing that I'm trying to approach everything with lately is to be for the future because it's going to happen anyway, and I want to be a part of shaping that future because it is going to happen anyway, and I want to be as courageous as possible because we're all being called to be courageous as possible in these times. And so let's reimagine the best possible Portland we can, and I'll stop at that. But thanks to my colleagues for seeing this through committee, thank you for all the engagement, and let's send it to the voters.
Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the extent there's a record here, I want to lay down the reasons why I'm not going to be supporting this, in particular because of my background, there's probably a lot of people expect me to do so. There's just a couple of things that I can't get over. You know, we've heard a lot of different arguments, probably dozens of different types of arguments about why this might be bad, I don't subscribe to a lot of them, but there are a couple that I haven't been able to overcome. And I think I actually would jump off from where Counselor Bullitt was just talking about her optimism about change and shaping the future. I think I've come to feel very pessimistic about where we are right now, and the testimony we have heard about, you know, Medicaid and reimbursement rates, I don't view that as uncertainty for these entities. I think they're actually staring into an abyss. And we make this change now before we know if they're going to face an absolute apocalypse about how their organizations are run. And I just can't approach an issue completely in the mindset of my own ideology. I think I do owe it to the people who represent to see the facts on the ground as we see them coming at us, and I can't in good conscience do that to these entities at this moment. My second reason is I do take seriously what the voters say, and we did have a referendum on this just two and a half years ago where the voters did say no. And we have ordinances in our books that compel us to take it seriously when voters pass issues. I personally take it seriously when they say no as well. So that said, those are my two issues that I just can't overcome. And I've had good conversations with colleagues, I don't resent or take issue with people who are on the other side of this, but I just want to state on the record that the two things that I just can't get past to support something I normally would. I would offer just a couple of comments on a pathway forward. At heart, I'm a unionist, not a socialist, and to me that means the real way to get at higher wages is to collectively bargain and to negotiate them. I work for an organization that's successfully raised wages many, many times over for thousands and thousands of workers, and they do that at the bargaining table. I would also suggest that for Main Health and for Coffee by Design, we heard some of the great benefits that their workers have received recently, and I would note that those two organizations also recently had their employees organize into unions. And for those out there in the Portland community who don't feel their wages are high enough, that is also an option. Those examples are sitting there as pathways forward so that you can have a seat at the table and bargain your wages, benefits, and anything else that you want to. Lastly, I did look this up, and the minimum wage has been raised 17 times since I moved to Maine 25 years ago. I'd be willing to bet that the business lobbies in Maine oppose it every single time, and we have not seen the sky fall despite that raise from 515 up to what it is now at the state level because we've done it slowly. And this, to me, is a classic example of boiling the frog slowly, and if you do it too fast, you have some pretty bad unintended consequences. So I'm here saying that I am open to minimum wage changes, but I think it has to be slower, and I think we have to be a little patient given the circumstances surrounding all of us right now. So that, those are my reasons for voting no and how I would encourage people to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McNeves.
Thank you, Mayor. I really hear and echo almost everything every other counselor said. I think we're living in this real duality where there's so many things are true at one time. This, I just want to think a little bit about the history of this. This proposal's been in process for well over a year. It was developed by a previous council in a very, very different world last summer, a much more certain world, and even then it was controversial enough that it was kicked back to committee by one of the sponsors. You know, there was doubt about whether this was the way to go, and with the dramatic changes on the federal level, I fully expect it would get to committee, and we would have a sort of a deep and full discussion about why it was there and what changes we were seeing in the world and funding, and where that would lead us. You know, I mean, the landscape, as we've just discussed, it's so different for grant-funded and fixed reimbursement nonprofits, and, you know, that would not have been an easy discussion. You know, folks who are receiving nonprofit services are often either going to be affected by their own wage and whether it goes up or down, or what paying the new wage is going to do to their employer, large or small. But when it got to committee, there really wasn't a lot of appetite for that deeper dive, and the first discussion was basically, how do we get this back on the council's schedule? And I was kind of confused and surprised by that because I didn't understand why it was sent back. it was sent back for more conversation if that conversation was going to happen. And now, we do have a change now, we have a new amendment that we just voted for, that basically stops the schedule of, of raising the minimum wage by about a year. And I really appreciate what went into that, I think that does make it a better ordinance, that's why I voted for it. But I really do, I still am confused why none of that was a discussion throughout this past year, you know, it came back to committee. Counselor Phillips very, very generously supported my desire to have it come back to the AGDC committee, AGDC, that is committee, again, and discuss it more. And again, it just wasn't, it just wasn't a very robust discussion. You know, we didn't discuss, we didn't discuss the fact that this will affect the tax rate, and increased taxes on, on homeowners, and those taxes go back and affect the cost of housing, which is another element of why people are struggling so hard in Portland. You know, the economy does not stop at Portland's borders, I mean, we all know that, and if things get tougher here for businesses, nonprofits, you know, there's, there's a real potential for loss and relocation. And, you know, people are going to go to a place where they have a better chance to hold on. So I, I would, I really want to support sending this to the ballot tonight, but I, I can't, because I do think that this is state work. You know, when Portland goes it alone, sometimes we're a leader, and sometimes we're an outlier. And on this particular issue, I think that this does continue to make us an outlier. So I won't be supporting it, but I do wanna address this idea that if you are against this, you're against workers, or you're pro-big business. I think those narratives are just so, so corrosive. There's not a single person here who is making this decision based on wanting to, you know, raise up big businesses and crush workers, it's just not the case. Everybody's here trying to make a decision that they think will be the best thing for the most people. We disagree about where it, what's going to make that happen sometimes. So I won't be supporting it, but I will absolutely be supporting the continued work at the state level, so that we're not just raising up Portland workers, but we're raising up all Maine workers.
Anyone else? Counsel Pelletier.
Just briefly, I don't hope to convince Counselor Grant, but I do wanna poke one hole, which is that the previous referendum had tip credit in it. I think any sober analysis would say that that's the reason it failed. It had tens of thousands of dollars spent fighting it by the national restaurant industry, which Yorker has recently done an expose on. It is a, an astroturfing campaign. So this is, it is, it is a different, a different beast entirely, and I, you know, I think very highly of the electoral fortunes of, of a bill should be, should we send it forward.
Counsel Sykes.
Obviously, I will be supporting this tonight. I just, I wanna echo the, the points that Counselor Pelletier has raised, and I think it's really important to understand that, because from the beginning, there has been a conflation of the minimum wage question with the tip credit. Even when we considered it last year, the mayor considered both of them at the same time, as though they were the same order. And I think that that has really undermined the public process around this, and has lent the opposition to it invalid talking points. And so I think we owe it to the public to be very clear that this is not the same referendum, it's not the same in many different ways. We've, not only have we separated it from the tip credit, we have softened the ramp up, now we have an amendment that has ended the, the increase to 19 instead of 20. So it is very different, and I think that that's indicative of a council that really wanted to reach a consensus on this, and to do things that were good for Portland as a whole. So I think, I think that's just an important, that's important to state. I also just feel that when we're, I, I too, I think that the way forward is labor unions, I think folks need to organize and fight for, for their wages collectively, and bargain for their wages collectively. But this is what we can do right now, and it's what we should do in order to get the wage to a, the 60% of the median wage. And I think that that, after that, we don't have to touch this again, it will be where it should be, and CPI will take over after that. And so, you know, then after that, workers, it's your turn.
Any other comments? It's amazing. Simply amazing. I'm not a unionist, though I support unions. I'm not a socialist, though I think they have some good ideas. I'm a liberal, means I consider all sides, and try to, try to navigate a center path. I will not support this proposal. Some fundamental reasons. One, I think when it comes to what we do, we need to be predictable and consistent, and we've accomplished that with the minimum wage formula that's in place, and its adjustments for CPI. I'm troubled, I'm not troubled, I shouldn't say that. I appreciate the perspective that's been shared from a number of individuals concerning the worker posture and experience on this question, and the impact. I think there were some good arguments made there. But I somehow feel that the employer's view is somewhat discounted. You know, the implicit message for me, how I experience the message is, they make a lot of money, and they ought to share. Okay? That might be the case for some, right? But the case for me is, I've talked to a number of individuals who are in business, I don't see them as a business owner first, I suffer from the flaw, I've recognized them as just another person doing different kind of work. A lot of them have told me stories, not solicited, but over the course of knowing them as people, how they're the ones that don't take a salary home when COVID hit, of the sacrifices they made, as someone described it as comforts at home, to keep employees with somewhat of a paycheck, so their families wouldn't suffer as adverse a consequence as they might have. And many have not yet really recovered from COVID. For some of us, it's a historic thing, we fear it might come back. Well, the, the rippling and the rooted nature of that event carries forward even today in the business community. I think that's important to note. I've worked in the hospitality side, I was a short-order cook, that's how I got through college, right? My knife skills weren't probably passable today, but we were tight, the kitchens I worked in, it's hard work, and they should be compensated, but it was a team effort, and we did the best they can. And many of my colleagues, friends of the family, as we would say back then, this was a position that despite the talent of our chef, we were moving on, right? When I was working for minimum wage in a foundry, I already knew I was moving on. This wasn't gonna be a livable wage for me, this was an interim salary that I was able to secure. I would never have thought of trying to raise a family, and as far as living in Portland, I was a police officer for some time, commuting from Lewiston, because even back then, I couldn't find a place to live in Portland that made sense. At the time, I was grossing $156 a week, a princious sum, for sure. So my brother's in the private sector, when I entered politics, he says, be predictable and be consistent. So I think we have a wage income policy in place that is predictable, because it's on a schedule, it's consistent in its application, businesses have time to adjust to it. And more importantly, I haven't seen a massive influx of citizens reaching out to me saying there needs to be a change. The last couple of days I've had, I've just signed on to the petition for $20 minimum wage, and it's, it's boilerplate that's been shared to some mailing list, that's fine, we get lots of those. But I haven't seen the surge, in contrast to the previous order on the coal dust, there was a lot of work in the community by a lot of people. And I think they had a legitimate question to put before the electorate. I think the council did a better decision by sending it back to a committee with approval. I'm not sure, even those who might have supported that ballot question would completely understand it. This proposes to be something in the direct opposite. It becomes a ballot question that no one, no one asks the questions. I think there's a lot of merit to the idea, if this simply can get before the voters, they'll pass it, right? Because the top-line message, who could be against that, right? Who could possibly be against that? Because they won't have the time to look into the consequence of what that vote might do. So those are the reasons, and I'll probably be in the minority this evening, I've learned to accept that. It's not the end of the world, but I want you to consider that it could be the beginning of real significant consequences for some employers, right? I'm not gonna say they're all gonna be out of business, but I read the MECD report, Counsel Sykes provided that to me, and I thought it was a helpful read. But I love the way economists say, there'll be contractions in the labor pool, such a nice way of saying, see you later out the door. Contractions, I didn't know I was preparing for an OB-GYN experience. But nonetheless, contractions and labor are words that shouldn't be together, right? It's not good for them. And, and most of the economic research was definitely tilted towards a labor perspective, and I thought it was informative. And I'll close with this. Wage policy is a state issue. It belongs to the state, it's the responsibility of the legislature, so it's an even hand, so it does not create unfair competition when a city can act independently, or a county for that matter, if Cumberland County decided to join the effort. It's gotta be a statewide policy. Competition needs to be fair if employees' labor is to be treated fairly. So that's all I wanna say, because otherwise than that, I'd be rambling. But I do oppose this measure, not for the work and the integrity of the sponsors, I think they exercise that, but for the consequences it has on both the employer and the employee market. Thank you. All right, if there's no other comment, we'll call the vote. This case has to be by roll call, am I correct? Adam Clark, call the roll.
Counsel Fournier?
Yes.
Counsel Grant?
Nope.
Counsel Sykes?
Yes.
Counsel Ali?
No.
Counsel Pelletier?
Yes.
Counsel McNevich?
No.
Counsel Bullet?
Yes.
Counsel Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Dion?
No.
Passes five to four.
Five, four. Passes. All right, then. Do the council have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Pelletier, seconded. It was Counsel Ali, all those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Wait till we get the bill.
So I'm gonna, we're gonna revise the plus one pack though, and it, like, they brought it up to 1675, and probably for next year with the bump up, it might have been like 1550, so it's about 25. Heard about.